It's a day to go.
All right.
Live on Facebook and live on Zoom.
All right, here we are. Thank you all for your patience. We had a little bit of a technical difficulty getting everything launched, but here we are at 5:34. This is a special convene of the of the school committee here for a public hearing on the school committee budget. I'm going to call everyone who ordered at this point. Mr. Kearney has not yet arrived, but is on his way. Mr. Carr.
Present.
Ms. Sian.
Present.
Ms. McCollum.
Present.
And I, Lance Stile, present. We have a quorum for the public hearing on the school committee budget for the fiscal year 2024. The purpose of this meeting is for public comment pursuant to Massachusetts general laws on the school committee deliberations on and certification of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. And with that, I am going to turn it over to our Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Sue Owen, to walk through the budget proposal. Unless, Dr. Sullivan, you have anything to introduce.
I do not. Just, Sue, I think sometimes after you've seen the screen, up top where it says slideshow.
Right. But I can't see, I can't see that on my screen.
Also, the icon on the bottom.
You can't see slideshow?
No, because her probably presentation comes up top.
See the slideshow icon? That one might be it.
There she is.
There you are.
There it is. Welcome to the public hearing.
Technical director. So I'm sorry, Chairman Dial, that was brutal to me. I do not have anything to add to the budget presentation. I will turn it over to our Director of Finance and Operations, Sue Owen.
Good evening. Public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 school budget. Today's lunch for us. Weather's nice, nice now. And we will just move on. Here are some of our budget priorities. Teaching and learning, social emotional wellness, resources, communication, engagement. And we'll get, we'll jump right into the numbers. So the current budget for 2023 is $22,345,352 to roll over or contractual salary obligations is approximately $684,604. We received an increase in sticker breaker funding of $468,753, which is a bonus to us. We had a slight increase in special education tuition for $46,983. And we have several projected retirement savings amounting to about $180,000. So just the roll over costs are about $82,834. Then we move into our staffing and other requests. As you can see, we have, we would like to add a grade three teacher based on enrollment. We would like to add a .5 math specialist to the Osford Elementary School. We would like to add a preschool teacher and a preschool educational support professional to physical program at Osford Elementary. We would like to add a .5 math specialist at Deer Hill Elementary. We would also like to add a math teacher at the middle school and a math teacher slash specialist at the high school. A .5 athletic trainer. We would like to add an educational support professional to the library, the high school or the middle school, as we only have one person manning the local library. And then we would also like to add a custodian to the middle and high school, which was based on a funding that was done a few years ago. And we have further information back here. The next slide is facilities and security coordinator. It's an increased responsibilities. They want a $15,000. A human resource payroll, increase in responsibilities, name change, amount of $10,000. We have two slides. You can see this is A at the top, so this, to continue the process of reducing full day K tuition by adding $50,000 to the budget to support the program. And then we have an increase to supplies and materials in our curriculum to the arts and math for $272,188. So the additional recommendations total $819,423 plus our roll over cost is a request of 8.5 FTEs or $902,257 in addition to our current budget, which will total FY '24 would be $23,247,709 or a 4.04% requested increase. The next slide is the same, except for you'll see it's make full day K free. So instead of $50,000, it says $300,000, which would then would parents to have free kindergarten, full day kindergarten. And that request is a 5.16% increase or an additional $1,152,257. No questions, I'll continue. I don't know if Leslie wants to speak of any of these, or Dr. Swans, I'm sorry. This was the backup data on growth. It's a lot of the positions relate to our MCAS results.
Right, so as you can see, with we look at our MCAS scores, it's just one data point, but it is one that we look at. And you can see that our, our math scores are below where we'd like them to be. We've had some nice growth and we've made some improvement, but we still are in need of really reinforcing our foundational math. That's been a focus for us, not only early numeracy, but also early literacy. And we're starting to see those benefits with the additional positions that we added in ELA. And certainly at the middle school, we have added reading and math support. And we've seen the benefits of that. So I think adding those additional math specialists, as well as that math teacher at the middle school, will help us replicate a bit of what we've already done for literacy, K through eight. That we support, they'll be extremely helpful for our math. We have some nice momentum going, so it would be really helpful to have those positions to keep that continuous growth.
This is the student service staff request, which was the additional one pre-K teacher and one pre-K educated support personnel. We currently have waitlists each year. This would provide us two classrooms and we would no longer have a waitlist. There will be everyone who would like to participate to participate. So this is some of the backup data for that. The additional custodian at the middle high school. We did a comprehensive custodial staffing analysis back in 2018. The study showed that we need to, we needed to add several custodial staff based on square footage of buildings. Osford has already been increased from the 2.6 to the 3. Deer Hill has already been increased from the 2.4 to the 3. Who has at middle school has been increased from five to six and a half. So we, the question would be for one additional custodian. As well as they've taken on a lot more responsibilities now that we've defined our roles with DPW facilities pertaining to landscaping and small maintenance issues. Central office request, so facility security increase. It would be a second position, which would increase an existing staff member's responsibilities. This person would review, monitor and view all the cameras throughout the day. Staff members also walking through a school on a daily basis, checking on doors, windows and any security issues and just having a presence in the buildings. The second request for the central office was the human resource payroll, which is really just an increase in responsibilities and an updated name change, basically. It would streamline our onboarding process for new staff. It does not take away any responsibilities from the town hall. It's, it's some of the responsibilities we're currently doing. The staff would also work with support channel regarding personnel issues, which they currently are doing, such as leave of absence, F and L, what's called position changes, salary changes and all the things that go along with the central office, including supporting transportation, facility rentals, student activities, among other duties.
When we spoke to the town about that, they, they liked the collaborative thought of us having a person that was a little bit more involved with HR here to work with them. And on more folks.
And then the kindergarten request. So option one would be to continue to reduce the cost of a full day kindergarten by adding $50,000 to the budget, which would offset the full day kindergarten. It brought the tuition from $3,500 to $3,300, and this would bring it from $3300 to $3,100. So it's a profit discount of $200 per student. Option two would be if we funded the whole program, $300,000 would eliminate the tuition altogether. Based on some numbers that we received from contacts throughout the D and D C district, could be and would be eligible for additional chapter 78 in the second year, depending on the impact that currently students have on, these students as full day K. So right now the column is half. So this would, this would increase our enrollment, which would continue to increase on chapter 70. The first year we would need to front load the cost of $300,000 and we would see the additional chapter 70 of that point 25.
One of the things in this, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I probably should have mentioned at the beginning was the purpose of the hearing, of this hearing, I didn't really articulate that. The purpose of the hearing is for the public to provide input into our deliberations. So the, the great thing is that the Cohasse School Committee, you, you provide the public this forum to create, to comment at all times, whenever we present anything. This is a very formalized hearing that's required by law to allow the public that, that hearing. So I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear, but I just want anybody who's watching out there, I don't know what order you might want them to ask. If you want them to, you know, ask along the way or hold off questions till the end.
So my plan was to allow Sue to run through her presentation and then we'll see if there's any comments from the public or any comments from the, from the committee, although we have seen this a couple of times.
Yes.
Very iteration, so. Yes, of course.
Now, I apologize for that. It should have.
I should.
No worries.
So next is the Joseph Osford School and this one is the payroll and what her, the requests for her school were. These are her priorities for her school. And you see down from to increase the amount of teacher support and coaching in math, which is we're requesting increase in math support by a .5 person. This person will work full time with a math specialist to support any pullout and in-class interventions at Earl University. And it would increase the number of students meeting and exceed, meaning it's an expectation for that. And the data supporting it would be the district strategic plan, social emotional learning, culture responsive teaching, school-based data and MCAS data. Again, more directed towards our math, our math tools. Just to give you a little chat, I want to add that, and look like grade three math. And then we're going to Deer Hill School, which is special elementary and what her request that. So she has her priorities. And then her request as well is a .5 elementary math specialist. If we had targeted flexible pullout groups, choosing the Bridges Math Intervention Program. And she's also looking for a .5 math ESP transition to skilled work base that MCAS data.
So she's, just to be clear, so we have the point for math ESP. This would set up a nice triangle between the full-time math specialist, our 1.0 math specialist at Deer Hill, the point for ESP who is providing support, and then this point five math specialist. So we'll be able to really support students in the classroom and then to help students in a, in a pullout, if necessary, who were in, who were in need of help.
And then the request for a grade three teacher. Students coming in grade two were in kindergarten in the 2021 school year, in which hybrid was most of the year. So we're trying to keep the class size the same for that group of students that are moving up through the elementary level. And again, it's the grade five math MCAS data. This shows the, the need for math. And here's where I show the class size. Going to grade three, four and five. Again, just more statewide data.
Ms. Owen, we can, we can, these have been displayed to the public multiple times. We can kind of blitz through them and list the stuff to add. I just want to make sure we preserve time for all the comments, should there be.
Absolutely. Move on to the middle school. At the middle school, we're looking for an addition of a 1.0 math teacher. Again, it's data to support a bunch of priorities. At MCAS data schools, average class sizes in math. And then the data just supporting a bunch of priorities. It would give smaller grade six math classes. And then we'll move on to the high school, which is practical right. Again, we're looking for 1.0 math teacher slash specialist. Develop a ninth, tenth grade order elective and foundational math skills, reduce class size and explain the math electives.
So we're sure we're really trying to buttress the supports as the students who may have had gaps move through the gray levels in math.
And then the high school, middle school, high school, I should say, we're looking to add a 1.0 library educational support specialist, professional. Where we have a middle high school, we only have one library in, in this, in this area who also teaches classes. So this would give the depressive support when she's teaching classes rather than having volunteers.
That's right.
A .5 athletic trainer. MIAA rules require athletic trainers to attend all O A football games. We only have one athletic trainer at a time. He can only be at one place at one time. So this, this would allow us to, you know, send a second athletic trainer.
Remember in the fall, there's that mandate about having an athletic trainer for football. So it does limit the, the athletic trainer for other sports who certainly need it. And we've gone over these extensively, but there's.
Are there any questions? And that, that's all right.
Well, that's a nice segue. First, I'll check this. Do we have any, any, any public comment from the audience? Have you, here, none, Sue?
We do.
Your stuff share. Do we have any public comment from online?
Do not.
Not? Okay, this is the opportunity for public comment. The deliberations of the Cohasse School Committee will happen separately at a meeting, which will vote on the school budget. So if you have specific comments that we should have in our minds before we have our next meeting, speak now.
Should make the point that, you know, we are, we are working with the town, you know, and conversing with them regarding this to see what we can do. And, you know, but right now, we're still, the, the ask is still. And then on the 15th is when the final deliberation and voting through the budget from this perspective, from the school committee's perspective, that's our next school committee happens. And once we vote that through, then it would be approved by the select board. And then that goes to county meeting, correct?
Wait another 10 seconds or so for any, I would say further public comment, but any public comment. Right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing for the budget of the Cohasse School Committee? So I have, Ms. McCollum has moved that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Carr. All in favor?
Aye.
All votes, none? The motion carries. The public hearing of the Cohasse School Committee is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Now, what we can do is we have, let's say, about seven minutes. So I will just stop the video and mute.
Stop the video.
And we'll keep, we'll be here and then we'll be ready to resume with the real school committee, the, the actual school committee.
Regular school committee.
Correct, thank you. We will do so.
Okay, we are once again live on Facebook and live on Zoom.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Wednesday, March 1st, 2023 regular meeting of the Cohasse School Committee. We just completed our, our public budget hearing and now we're moving into our regular meeting. I'm going to start by calling the need to order with a vote call. Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mr. Carr.
Present.
Ms. Sian.
Present.
Mr. McCollum.
Present.
And Mr. Dial, present. We have a full quorum and all members are in attendance. Now, as customary, we will start with the pledge allegiance. I'll take a wish to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. So we have some, some special guests here. We have an exciting agenda as far as invited guests. So I'm not going to belabor anything with any, with any introductions. We did just have our public hearing on budget. So again, if you have any comments on that, please forward it to your local Cohasse School Committee representative. I will now open the floor to public comment. Public comment is a agenda item for public comment, which is why it's named that. But it's about stuff that's not on the agenda. So if you have, if you want to make a comment on something that is on the agenda, you can let us know at this point, but otherwise, please reserve that comment for the agenda item in question when we solicit comments there, therein. So for now, I'll see if there are any public comments unrelated to the agenda or the name of public comment, agenda item. Monitoring and not seeing any, no hands from the audience. So we will move on to our invited guests. So we have a, a couple of special invited guests from our Eagle Scout candidates, I believe. And I think we'll start with Ms. Haley Cody.
Haley, come on down if you will. Welcome. Sit right there, I'll get your presentation. Haley is a ninth grader at Cohasse High School. Let me get the presentation up there for you. All right. Take it away here.
So I'm presenting the baseball dugout improvements and design goals for a project. The proposed objective would be repainting the two dugouts and restoring the shed. It's a task that will be on the local field. Thank you. And the benefits of it is that it is the baseball team, the school, taxpayers, parents, anyone that can collapse it pretty much. Cost estimation, $2,000 to $3,000, because we're painting an area of 1,500 square feet, because it's the dugouts and the storage shed. And then we need to get some various supplies. So, oh, and we're going to get some discounts from Lowe's and Hinglewood if we can to make it less costly.
Very nice.
And I'd like your permission to do pursue this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. So, and this, of course, is where your sports teams play here and it's an important fixture in the town. Yes. So this is a wonderful, wonderful project and very appreciated from the school perspective, for sure. Yes, turn it over to your chairman.
Yes. Well, actually, before I do that, any comments or questions from the, from the members of the committee? Kenny?
I just think that's wonderful. I love to see your volunteerism, a great thing to do. Maybe I'll be all involved there and get something special that you get out of it. Very proud of you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny, Mr. Carr.
Thanks for choosing this. It's way overdue to repair the company. So thank you for doing this. This is a really important project and congratulations.
Ms. Ellen?
Um, Haley, I'm sure you can tackle this on your own, but do you have a plan to have other scouts work? Haley, I'm sure you tackle this on your own, but do you have a plan to have other scouts work with you?
Yes, we're planning, we have scout volunteers and hopefully we could go baseball team to help.
Oh, awesome, that's really smart. Collaboration.
Ms. McGowan.
Thank you, Haley, I think the baseball field is a lot of love, so glad that you've selected this for your project. It's, I feel like our baseball athletes deserve better than they have currently, so thank you very much.
So Haley, thank you very much for doing this. It's lovely to see people giving back to the community and that's how we can maintain a community that is as nice as Cohasset. So I think you certainly heard from the committee, we appreciate what you're doing and support we're doing. There's a little bit of jurisdictional issue though in that the school doesn't own Milliken Field. So there's nothing for us to approve as far as like formal approval. But you certainly have the school's support and let us know if there's anything we can do to help you push the project forward.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe we can do a vote of confidence.
Vote of confidence, we can get both to that. So, well, do I have a motion?
I move to express our confidence in Haley Cody's Eagle Scout project as presented by her moments ago.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now let's do it, Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Ainge.
Aye.
Mr. McCollum.
Aye.
And Mr. Dial, aye. You have unanimous support from the school committee here, so thank you very much, Haley Cody. Appreciate your work here.
Who owns Milliken, what's the next step?
It's town. So we had actually a funding conversation. That's wonderful, and thank you to Haley's family as well and to everyone that supported Haley through the scouts. And I'm going to say the same for Rex as well. It's, I know it takes a village and obviously made a great impact on an awesome person. Nice job, Haley, nice job, everyone.
All right, so we'll move on to Rex Schiffman with a very Eagle Scout projects we have for us, so thank you.
Rex is a 10th grader.
I am. I'm currently a life scout with 228 and I am, last night actually got permission from the town during the select meeting to build the stairs up to Milliken Field from Bancroft Way. The project overview, it would include the two sections of stairs, eight stairs on the bottom and nine stairs on the top. Three gravel landings separating them. It would include about 50 railroad ties and a bunch of metal spikes as well as two wooden railings along the side. As the railings now are robed and falling down. The location is leading up to the baseball field from Bancroft Way once you walk across the turf. Current stairs are falling into disrepair. There are rotten steps and fallen railings and they really need to be replaced. Here are just some photos of the issues with the current stairs. This would be the proposed design. It has, like I said earlier, two sections of stairs separated by three gravel landings along with rigid handrails and posts into the ground drilled into the stairs in multiple points.
Nice work with the design, it's good.
The budget, budget is roughly $3,750 to $4,300. This one includes 50 railroad ties ranging between $30 and $35 along with materials for the railings as well as non-slip treads for each step as they, when wet, they can be very slippery and dangerous. And all the labor will be volunteer. The timeline and funding. It would be nice to have the stairs redone relatively quickly after they are removed by the town, especially if it's during the spring as every day after school, sports teams and baseball, actually play baseball. The town or for the high school need to use those stairs. So looking at spring, work on the weekends or early summer. And funding has been fully funded by the town. It's been fully approved.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, Rex and Chairman Dial.
Great, I'll open it up to the committee for any comments or questions, Mr. Kearney.
This is great, we scouts do, you're always in front of us doing something. Thank you.
Mr. Carr.
Rex, this is great, I mean, I think so many people use those stairs and every morning you get some of the students park over there, so they're kind of cut across the field, so every time I walk by that area, I see those stairs and go, we have to do something about that. So, I should do it something. It's terrific.
Ms. Ainge.
Yeah, I agree, I think these stairs have not looked great for like 30 years. So it's about time, when it was my commute to school, I thought, these are kind of in bad condition. So, thanks in the year 2023 for taking care of that. I guess I could have, I don't know, sent something up three decades ago, but thank you. It's really nice to see both of you taking care of a similar area. I feel like somewhere that whole corner of our town is going to look gorgeous, so thank you.
A great presentation for professional Rex, thank you very much. Staircase dilapidated, maybe you could say the hat of one of unfortunately many bests of our town that is, that are dilapidated. But my question is, stairs are actually trickier than you might think. I'm wondering, you said that the volunteer labor, do you have any volunteers that, you know, have like experience in landscaping or contracting or something like that?
Most volunteers for these Eagle Scout projects, these other scouts. I actually helped volunteer with William Elwell's Eagle Scout project, stairs behind. Did about 20 hours helping with those stairs. And.
Those came out great.
Yeah, it was a lot of like alignment and measuring, making sure they're all perfect. And he is also going to help volunteer for my project and we all kind of work together with each other.
A little reciprocity there, maybe a little YouTube video instruction as well. Okay, good, well, that's great to hear, I'm happy to hear that, thank you so much.
And I assume the loving inspector.
Yes.
Ms. McGowan, still my question as well, there's, I'm a little amateur carpenter myself, I know how difficult angles can be. So this is, this is great, thank you for again paying attention to this area of our community that we need help. I've been on those stairs and it's one of those things where you like walk down, you're like, that was unsafe, but I'm just going to keep going. So thank you for not just keep going, thank you for stopping and thinking about how you can make the community better. So very much appreciate that. Again, here we have the kind of jurisdictional question, but you already hit the select board. So I think what I'll do is call for a similar vote of confidence in your project here from the school committee. Do I have a motion for Rex similar to the motion for Haley?
Some.
Anybody a second?
Second.
All right, the second by Ms. Ainge. I'll do, we'll call both, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Ainge.
Aye.
Ms. McCollum.
Aye.
And Mr. Dial, aye. Unanimous support for your project, thank you again for all you're doing for our community and we very much appreciate it.
Can I ask, is there anything formally that needs to be signed or?
No, the town is official beneficiary, so they just sign off.
Okay, wonderful, it's great, again, just as I said, Haley, thank you families and everybody. Rex, thank you, Rex.
Thank you.
Wonderful, great job both of you.
Thank you, from a scout master's point of view and advisor to these folks, we're going to coordinate with the sports team, so we're not trying to interrupt them. We're not going to paint them, paint the dugouts while they're practicing or having a game.
Thank you.
So we're going to work with their schedules and coordinate as best we can.
That's accurate.
You have a sound.
Thank you all.
Much appreciated, thank you, have a wonderful night.
Yes, thanks very much, thank you all. All right.
It's awesome.
I know, it's going to look so nice up to the end.
This is fantastic, and the embarrassment of riches continues. Our next agenda item is a gift from the PSO.
Yes.
Dr. Sullivan, you've got the information.
Yes, PSO, we have to do the.
PSO first we have.
Oh.
Yes, all right.
It is a. So this is a gift in the amount of $1,000 from, do we know who this is from?
The PSO.
Yes, so.
From the PSO. And is it, is there a reason behind it?
It's for the multicultural event?
That's correct.
There's a medal on the check.
Yes, sorry, a little something I have to take today. For the multicultural event which we have coming up and so very excited about that. And thank you to the PSO for this and I apologize for my lack of memory on that. Always wonderful receiving gifts and certainly from the PSO who does so much for us for this really important event. Thank you, PSO.
So unless there's any comments or questions, I'll undertake a motion to accept the gift from the PSO.
Some.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McCollum, seconded by Ms. Ainge. We'll just do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimously accepted? Dr. Sullivan, please, and Ms. Ainge, please accept the gift on behalf of the class PSO with our deepest thanks and appreciation. And I'll tell the president herself.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
So now we'll move on. We do not have a school committee student liaison report, and this O'Neill, I think, has schoolwork to attend to, which brings us to our next agenda item, a generous gift from the CEF relating to the Deer Hill Innovation Commons.
Yes, related to the President Christian Quinn. Thank you.
Best part of the job here. I'm presenting a gift that was given to the Cohasset Education Foundation from the McNamara family in honor of their wife Susan, who they are, or his wife and mother to their four children, Susan, who they are sadly losing to dementia. So he, and fun fact, Susan started the Cohasset Education Foundation in its first rendition and was the first president. So he really wanted to give back to the CEF and to the schools in general because Susan was so involved in the schools and I'll touch upon that when I read her bio. But I spoke with Jack a bunch and we wanted to make sure that it was, you know, the money was going to a specific grant that would really commemorate his wife. And around the same time, a grant came across our desk in the amount of $100,000, which is the amount that he's giving to Cohasset Education Foundation to revamp the Deer Hill Library or Learning Commons. So he spoke with his kids and they thought it was a perfect fit. The Learning Commons will be a full steam library and she was very involved in the arts and sciences. So we just thought that that was a great fit to commemorate all the work that she did. So if you don't mind, I'd love to read a little bit of her bio, just so you can kind of understand the woman that she was. Susan Jane Bearden was born in Michigan in 1944, the fourth child and first daughter of Judge and Jane Bearden. As a young girl, she was as beautiful as she was bright and dazzled. Everyone with her brains with charm and talents. She studied at Newton College of the Sacred Heart where she met the love of her life, John Francis Jack McNamara, who is giving this gift, who dazzled her with, according to Sue, his legs and his car and Austin Healy. They were married in 1965. Jack was an officer in the US Marine Corps and the two traveled for his training. She became pregnant with her first child, Michael, in 1968, followed by Mary Elizabeth in 1970, named in honor of Sue's feminist admiration for Mary, Queen of Scots, as well as Queen Elizabeth I. They moved from Michigan to Illinois, settled in Glencoe where Katie was born and then Weneco where Megan was born. Sue has always been a loving model as a parent and a partner. In 1980, the McNamara family moved to Cohasset where Sue quickly and thoughtfully built a community of friends that were like family. "It takes a village," as she often says, her closest companion, she calls the Ya-Yas. And she thrilled, she thrived in their presence and loved hosting parties to bring people together. Always a brilliant person whose talents were translated mostly into motherhood, she threw herself into supporting both education and the arts in any way she could. She joined the discussion club in 1982, a collective devoted to women's study that had been in Cohasset since 1922 and spent months of every year researching her subjects and preparing her papers while always recruiting young pups for the group. She devoted herself not only to her family but also to service, spending years on the board of the South Shore Arts Center, organizing local political campaigns and volunteering nine summers with the Appalachia Service Project. In 1986, she took her commitment to service to another level, donating a kidney to save her brother Dan's life. Sue loves music and dancing almost as much as she loves books and learning, where she spent most of her time outside of the home was working with the school system in Cohasset. Sue was a devout believer in the power of public education and started the Great Brooks Program, the Arts Boosters and the Cohasset Education Foundation and was among the founders of the PSO. For that reason, her family thought that the best way to cement her legacy beyond her nine grandchildren was with a major gift to the Cohasset schools. Nothing could make Sue happier than knowing how generations of future students would learn and grow from a new steam library in Cohasset. Unfortunately, and somewhat ironically, much of her brain and her personality has been stolen by the cruelty of dementia, but she would be delighted to see the ways in which her brilliant and beautiful touch can help others for years to come.
Thank you very much, Ms. Quinn.
My pleasure.
Do we have anything on the, mentioned pictures of the library?
I don't, I actually couldn't find those.
They're on the top of your email from Ruth if it's, I had her send those to you. Alex Sullivan and her team put together a really well-written grant with renderings and costs. And, you know, it's a, it's a large grant for us to fund and with this gift, it frees up funds for the spring to fund other grants. So it's, it's huge for us. But there are sections that will focus on science, technology, engineering, arts and that.
Fantastic, while Dr. Sullivan pulls that up, I'll open it up to the committee. Mr. Kearney, any comments, thoughts?
What a legacy. Thank you. You know, especially the comments, and we sit in these conferences and the hard work with the Education Foundation here. Yeah, you can see clearly through, now you can see books better, and so the lights, it's such a good learning center in the center. My children enjoy it and knowing that we are, because we talked about, this is what we use tonight because we did talk about Deer Hill being like, what a gift.
Yeah.
A gift, what a purpose for life.
Thank you, this was seven years ago, the Cohasset Education Foundation redid this Learning Commons just in case people weren't aware, but this feels very full circle.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney, Mr. Carr.
So Tanya and I are very friendly with Sue and Jack and it doesn't surprise me one bit. They would give this extraordinary gift, so wonderful news.
Ms. Ainge.
Yeah, I just think it's a very meaningful gift, I just can think of, it's going to touch every kid in class if you walk through that room and we're very, very lucky to be having such an impactful gift given so generously, just like kids and teachers and families are really, really lucky to be getting something.
Ms. McGowan.
Just a heartfelt thanks to the entire McNamara family. Okay, I'm sorry for what they're going through. Dimension's really difficult, but I think it's a wonderful way to contribute to someone who's clearly a lovely human being and I think the world would probably be a better place if there won't be people like Ms. McNamara out there.
And from, from my end, just I wish I had better words than thank you, but this is, this is huge. It will have a huge impact on a lot of students for generations to come and what a better way to make a contribution than to impact so many young lives. So our heartfelt thanks to the McNamara family and the CEF, thank you for all you do and we're excited to be able to offer this to our students.
Yeah, this is, it's a lovely design and I can show you it here, I finally figured it out, sorry. But it's, it really will provide a full steam approach, which for those of you who don't know what the acronym means, it means science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. So it really allows students to use the whole area to learn in a very project-based, product-based oriented manner. So it's very, it will open up the, that, which has a frame of being a gorgeous space into a really useful learning environment for our students. So it's, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful gift. It just, just gives you, first of all, a sense of what we have now, beautiful space that's, that's kind of, not kind of, it's very cluttered and not necessarily, it's akin to what this, the rumor right now was before it opened up and became this beautiful space.
More of what typical library would have been years ago.
And some of the designs we have, you can see the, some of the work, the workspace, the way everything flows within the space.
They're all flexible spaces, so all of that furniture moves around, it can, just like we have here.
Modeled, this was modeled specifically after the Apple Store where you can have that modular space.
And you can see conference spaces with the technology that can be used and all of this can, you know, be moved in different ways to provide that interactive learning that is so important, that collaborative learning is so important for our students. You know, you could, that, there's an existing, as there is here in this, in this room, that you can't see it at home because it's the other side of where we are, but there's a beautiful window here and it's the same at Deer Hill. It's, for those who haven't seen it, it's floor-to-ceiling window. And it just, unfortunately, the space isn't, it isn't as productive as it can be and this is going to take it to a next level and really be a centerpiece for learning in our district. Just some renderings. Just some renderings, some of the images. Really going to be, going to be wonderful. And then, they, they even, you know, thought of some of the swatches and some of the other things, so, yeah, but it truly is a
Oh, absolutely.
Truly wonderful and, and, you know, beautiful gift.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the gift. So, motion made by Mr. McCollum. For a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carr. I'll go through the, the roll call, Mr. Kearney, aye. Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Saint Ange?
Aye.
Mr. McCollum, aye. And I, Mr. Dial, the Professor of Superior School Committee has unanimously voted to accept the gift. Again, we thank you very much for, for this generous gift, thank the McNamara family as well. And we look forward to having a beautiful and productive Learning Commons in the Deer Hill School.
And I did want to say, yes, and I actually, I wanted to say, Chairman Dial, that because of Ms. McNamara's significant contributions, both starting, helping to start the CEF and the PSO, per policy, I'm going to form an ad hoc committee. And I'd like your permission for me to be able to do this, to consider naming this space the Susan McNamara Innovation Commons.
Yep.
Deer Hill. So, so what, what I would do is create that committee and then bring that for, for your voting consideration as a committee at our next meeting, which will be on the 15th.
So that, I believe, under policy, you have the right, the power to do, you don't need a committee action, but the committee would need to approve the ultimate recommendation.
Yeah, I, I, I have the ability to create a committee.
Yep.
Which I'm, I'm planning on doing.
Which you, you may have just done.
Thank you.
So, so at our next meeting, we will have, we expect to have the recommendations from that ad hoc committee on memorialization.
Wonderful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, great to see you all too, and thank you.
Thank you to the McNamara's deeply.
All right. So that concludes our, our agenda item on invited guests. We had a lot of people come to the, to the committee meeting this time, a lot of great things, and again, wonderful gifts from, from all facets of ours. And so with that, we'll move into school updates, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Patrick Sullivan for any school news.
Yes, thank you very much. So we, obviously, coming off of a vacation, I hope everyone had a restful break. I always feel like February break, in many ways, I'll speak for myself, with a large family, is the first time I can actually relax a little bit. Around the holidays, it's just, it's kind of a wild, wild time for me, but it was nice to have some family time and kind of tune out for a bit, so that was, that was fabulous. And we had sort of our first weather event, but we got through that okay. Which was nice. And I'm hoping, I used to be a fan of snow, and now I'm not a fan of snow. My position has definitely soured me on that, so just.
Maybe it's meteorological spring, so.
I was an epidemiologist for a while, now a meteorologist. Knocking it out a little bit.
I feel bad for him, I didn't come home.
Well, it's, you know, really, I, I, and in my newsletter, I really lay out how I do it, but it's really our collaboration with safety officials. You know, and safety is, is paramount, but, you know, second is to try to make sure we can get the kids to school, if we can, if we can do that safely, you know, we're going to do that. So, anyway, we have just a few sport, we, we, obviously, we have wonderful sporting teams that are involved in postseason competition. Our boys' basketball team did, did lose a close one to Mymonites, which is 65-57 last night. They came back in a real charge at the end, but just, just fell short, but congratulations to the, the boys and to, to coach on their, their fantastic season and great efforts, particularly the seniors. Tonight, we have the first round of boys' hockey, and they're playing tonight in Quincy Youth Arena. Tomorrow, our state champion girls' soccer team, the honors continue for that team and ritually deserved, will be honored at the State House at 10:00 AM. They have a tour, then lunch, so that'll be, that'll be lovely. Girls' basketball, first round competition is on the, on Friday. They, they have a home game, and it is, it is possible that Junior Sarah Shanet could, she's 22 points away from being a 1,000-point scorer. So she's, it's amazing, she's a junior, so she's a really good chance, you know. And I'm sure Sarah would say the team accolades are most important, but from a personal accolade standpoint of, you know, becoming potentially our all-time leading scorer at some point in your career. But that, that's an amazing achievement, trying to, you know, very few athletes are able to achieve 1,000 points in basketball, so that, that is very possible coming up. And then with a win tonight, the boys' hockey will travel to Shoshin Tech on Saturday, the 4th, in Billerica. And that, that time, that, that place, location time. So that is happening, and then I'm going to kind of yield my other time to, when we get to our academic updates, because we just had a vacation, so it's not a tremendous amount happening.
There's people who come back.
The academic updates would be, I think, more, more useful for you.
And you do have spring signups.
We do. You have spring signups for sports that are ongoing.
Email today.
Yeah, email today.
A lot of sports, spring sports.
Yes, there are. Yes, so if, if you're interested in a spring sport, make sure, focus, look at your emails, because it does lay out, that just came out today.
Yes.
And I know that next on the agenda is district calendar. I do want to propose, if the committee's okay with it, that we move, we switch, switch E and F, teaching and learning, and budget resources governance, because I know that one of our committee members was requiring us to depart early for another town governance engagement, and there's an important item under food service that we want to cover, so if that's okay, after we do school calendar, we'll switch over to budget resources and then do teaching and learning, if that is okay with the committee. Great. So without further ado, let's hit the district calendar.
We'll do. Just put some menus here. So, as we typically do at this time of year or thereabouts, the committee starts thinking about the calendar for the next few years. We've actually had some of these conversations because they were contractual. If you remember, from a contractual standpoint, you have, the committee sets the calendar, the CTA advises on the calendar. So we have run the calendar through CTA to advise us on, I have some, some thoughts for you for discussion today. And as I understand it, Chairman Dial, no vote will happen today, it will happen on 15th.
Correct.
Right. So I'll share the calendar, just, I know it's in front of you on your screen, but I will share it so that you can see it at home. A reminder that we did make a decision, and we've been advertising this, I think, pretty well, about the start of school next year. Remember that, as the language reads, I'll read it, if that's okay.
Yes.
Beginning with the 2023-24 school year, which is what we're looking at here. If Labor Day falls on September 3rd or earlier, the teacher's work year will start on the Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day, with the Friday before Labor Day as a no-school day for students and staff, and the first day of school for students taking place on the Tuesday following Labor Day. Now, this year, coming up, if Labor Day falls on September 4th or later, the teacher's work year will start on Monday and Tuesday before Labor Day, with the first two days of school for students taking place on Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day, and the Friday before Labor Day as a no-school for students and staff. So what that means is, because, and this past year, by the way, we, the reason it says beginning by 2023-24 is that 2020-23, we felt there, the committee felt there wasn't enough notice, so we didn't have that.
Well, and there was the short summer too.
Yes.
It's so late, it was.
Yeah, there were a few.
Bummer summer, if we, if we.
There were, there were a few reasons, and
Yes.
But this, this particular year upcoming, we, we are, we've already made that determination that we are, you know, we will be starting school before Labor Day. So, so you can see that it'll be the Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day. Friday will be off, Monday will be off, so it does still provide opportunity for, for, for families in that regard. And then we did work through some of the, the professional development days that are on here with the CTA to get their, their input. What you see in front of you is what we had actually presented to the CTA. They did have some ideas I wanted to bring to your, your attention for consideration. Again, we're not voting today, I understand, but you can certainly talk about it if Chairman Dial says it's appropriate to do so, and when it's appropriate to do so. But one of the things that they thought might be productive, and there are some districts that do this, is to flip the PD, PD days from afternoon to morning, and the reasoning they gave was so that students could sleep in. So the concept here would be that on early days that are professional development days, that mornings are the professional development, and the students can meet at the, the end of the day. I, you know, I mean, you can ask my opinion on that if you'd like, but I, I, I can see both sides to it. But this is really, for me, this is a community decision, and I think the CTA would agree, because it does impact your schedules and your schedules, which have a set. So that's, that's one consideration. I don't know if you want me to keep going with all the considerations?
Yes.
We can chat about, chat about them. And then the other consideration that is poss, is a possible thought here was that a couple of them, we felt instructionally weren't, weren't full. But there's one here that said possible return on January 3rd instead of January 2nd, this is after the, the first break we take with some of the holidays, due to holiday travel concerns. So their thought would be that instead of coming back, and you can see if I scroll down here, instead of coming back as is delineated on this, January 1st on a Monday, that we would come back on January 2nd. What that would do to the calendar.
No, it would be the 3rd.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's confusing.
Thank you. No, thank you. You're absolutely right. Instead of coming back on the 2nd, which is on the calendar here, because the 1st is blacked out, we would come back on the 3rd, thank you. And what that would do, of course, is it would add a day to the end of the year, because we have to go 180 days, so the end of the year would then be June 12th, as the calendar sits now, if that was added. So that, that was something they, they wanted to bring for the consideration, and then they had questions about Good Friday always being off the table as an off day, and I, I just answered that that is always a Cohasset school committee decision. And so, that was my answer, but yes, it could change, it's just something the committee would have to decide upon, as you said, calendar.
So the, the two revisions that came, the two proposed revisions that came from this, the CTA, from the discussions that, that we wanted to make sure we brought to the committee level, were one, whether we swap professional development days from afternoons to mornings. And two, the return from the winter holiday to be 1-3 instead of 1-2.
And, and one other, that I, I, you know, in talking to Dr. Sullivan, we felt could actually be an instructional and operational problem, but they, they also had the thought, and I apologize that I mentioned this. Right now, on this calendar, I'll give you an example, in October, where we have Indigenous Peoples' Day, as we have pre-voted and recognized as a, as a school committee, a school district, on the 9th of October, we have the Professional Development Day on the 6th of October, which is a Friday. So that provides the Friday as the, as the Professional Development Day, and then the holiday is the 9th. That was actually put in there as a proposal by the CTA for, for reasons being that it does provide that, that weekend potentially for families, and, and it would be, you know, it would be a good place to put Professional Development Day, as many families might leave on that Friday and not be in school. We, we, we don't advocate this, but
But it just happens.
It could happen, so it's a good day for Professional Development Day, but now the thinking is, and again, I, the, the thinking is that potentially, they're, having two consecutive weeks broken is not a productive instructional scenario. So if you look at the calendar as it's set here, if we have it like this, then the, the week of October 2nd to the 6th is broken with Professional Development Day, and then the week of the 9th through the 13th is broken. The reason that we felt, you know, and potentially this could be problematic, is if you put the, the Professional Development Day on the 10th, it would then create a scenario where you would have a three-day week, and we think it could backfire, and many families might travel on those days, and it could actually break up the instruction even more. But I did, I did want to mention that to you as a, that is something they also brought up. So there really were three reasons.
Thank you. So.
Can I ask a question? Are those really, are there not more examples right now in the calendar?
Or, there are, there's a couple more examples. There's Mamu King Day.
Yeah.
So Mamu King Day, although it's a half-day.
Half-day.
Okay. And then there is.
And there's another short week.
Yeah, and then there's down in May, Memorial Day. So, and you can see Memorial Day, the 24th and the 27th.
Sure.
So what we tried to do is, we, we endeavored to move, because the, the premise here is that the two broken weeks consecutively is not a good thing. So we tried, but we, we have some thoughts on moving it to the other week, but long now, two days off in a week, it's not a good thing. So we tried to move it around so that it didn't obstruct, so you, so you didn't have two weeks, and you couldn't do it with the October Day or the January Day, without dipping it to February, and we didn't really want a Professional Development Day in February, because it's a short week anyway. The only time we could do it would be in May, because obviously, we can move the half-day to the 17th, which would then not create two consecutive broken weeks. So we can do that, and we proposed that to them, as a, as a thought, I haven't heard back from that one, but thoughts on that? But again, it's the committee inevitably who votes on this. So that, just putting everything on the table for you.
So thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So we have the calendar in front of us, we have, we have it as is, and then we have recommendations from the, from the CTA as well. On the first, does anyone have any comments or questions on the CTA recommendations? Saint Ange?
Oh, on CTA recommendations? Yeah, sure, start with that. Um, I remember a number of years ago, and I think it was just before I had children in the district, so, six years ago? Um, maybe a little before that, there was a big move to purposely put those professional days attached to long weekends, because there were so many people traveling anyway. It was kind of like, let's work with what's already happening and then make the most of that day. So I think that would be a huge mistake to undo that right now, because that is kind of an expectation in district. It's, it's been this way not forever by any means, but, you know, within the last six to eight years maybe, that's the way it's been, and I think that's kind of what's expected, and let's be honest, people plan trips way ahead of time, these things are already booked, I know, like, mine are, like, people know what the plan is, more or less, and are going to do it. So we might as well have kids in school when we have school, and then when we have professional time. I have some other comments, but they're not related to this.
Well, let's, just to see, are there any other comments related to the moving the professional development days away from long weekends? I'll offer, from the conversation I had with Dr. Sullivan, that we're not aware of any complaints or concerns that have been raised up to this point about the two consecutive four-day weeks. So, and we didn't have that this year, so it, it's, well, we, we, that's a concern, it didn't seem to be a, a.
Not, not at our level or at the principal's level, from what I understand.
So.
If there was talk amongst teachers, that was a different story.
I, may I say something again?
Yes, absolutely.
I would actually argue that in the beginning of the year, it's actually very helpful to have broken-up weeks. It's like, we're kind of building momentum, I always call it like back-to-school jet lag. I feel like my kids and I literally look at the school calendar, and I'm like, great, there's basically only one full week up to Indigenous Peoples' Day. We can do this, you know, it's like, it's a lot to get back to school. Having a break and having a little bit of a moment to breathe as a kid, as a family, it makes a really big difference. I feel like if we're saying we're concerned about like social, emotional well-being, give them a break.
Yep. Any thoughts on the swapping of the professional updates from the, from the afternoons to the mornings?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
To either of you, know what the student-centric justification for that request is?
So the only thing that was provided to me was that they could sleep in.
Students.
That was actually the wording, the CTA presence, they could sleep in.
Which is more of what it was for high school than it would be for middle school, certainly.
And what, what other justification, so what non-student-centric or alleged? And what, what other justification, so what non-student-centric or alleged student-centric justification?
So I'm only, I, I haven't heard it. It wasn't really expressed to me. I, that was what was expressed to me, was that it was so that students would be able to get more sleep on those days. I could only guess that perhaps there may be some teacher fatigue after the day that may result in not as, this is just a conjecture from what I've heard from some folks, maybe not here, but in my career, that a half-day PD day does sometimes, it's hard because you work so hard with the kids, and then you, you have to switch gears. I'm not saying I agree with this, I'm just trying to give some thoughts. And that, that changing gears in the afternoon produces not as effective a PD day as you would if you came in in the morning and had that. I honestly am not sure.
Not sure. Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna defend that. I'm just saying that.
So when they, no, I'm, I'm, I understand. So these would be early release days or half-days, half-days for PD, right?
They would come in at lunch. The students would come in at lunch and stay for the
But let's stay in a normal situation where the students are dismissed early. They're dismissed at like prior to lunch service, or is it a half-day or an early release day?
Early release day.
It's an early release day, so it's like 1:15, something in the hour.
Correct.
So the, so just take the elementary for example, what, the PD goes from that time until 3:25, 3:30? So there's no difference in the teacher's workday? If the PD's in the afternoon?
It would be basically like a two, so it would be like a two-hour delay for the kids.
So what?
Saying, if you have PD in the back half of the day, things sometimes linger on, but if kids are arriving, it's a, it's a hard time.
So that's, so that's what I was trying to figure out. That's what I was trying to figure out. So that's exactly what I was trying to figure out. Okay, thank you for that. That's exactly what I was trying to figure out. I knew that there was something in that. Thanks. Perfect.
I just thought that's true. Kids are in between them.
And then any comments on the proposal to return on the 3rd, is that the same?
Yes.
Mr. K.
Why? Why, why would we do that?
So I, I think it's worth discussing. I think the stated version is so that people can come back from travel. Now that have a different time to think about.
It says due to holiday travel concerns.
Well, may I say something again?
Yes.
I'm full of things to say tonight.
This is, this is, this is.
Talking about input from teachers, and you happen to be.
I just think like, okay, as a teacher slash mom slash person who buys plane tickets, I would love to not come home on the Sunday of vacation and save thousands of dollars.
Yes.
So like, is it less expensive to come home on Monday or Tuesday? Yes, of course it is. That's how business works, right? And I'm assuming, well, like, as a teacher, I can't attach personal days onto a vacation unless I get permission from the superintendent, right? So, again, like, families can be more flexible with that timing, and it's really frustrating as a teacher because we always have to pay like the most expensive prices because we have to be home to do our job.
Okay.
I think they're thinking of families too.
Okay, well, that's, I don't know what they are, but this technology is.
I'm just thinking families are pretty flexible their time, especially in this post-COVID world we live in. It's, and this is not an accusation, it's just a reality of like, I feel like the traveling has become a little bit more
That's fairly compelling.
fluid, flexible. I'm just looking at other districts. I know Sintu is coming back on the 2nd. I'm just looking at him.
And the other thing to think about, at least from my perspective, is that you are buying that, like, the question for committee and the community is, would you rather have an additional day off in January at the expense of extending your school day or school year one more time, one more day in June? And I think one could argue that that value of having that January 2nd off is more valuable than having the June 12th off because of the way people are traveling, the time they're coming back. It's also nice to come back. Come back on the 1st, you have an extra day to decompress, get ready for school, that sort of stuff. So I think there's, there's some validity to that. That's worth discussing. Again, we're not voting on this tonight, so this is just airing of, of thoughts. Any other thoughts on those? Any thoughts on the calendar in general?
Yeah, so another thought.
Yes.
I had, I believe last year during our conversation, we were trying to set kind of like a predictable cadence for our calendar. We established the Labor Day rule clause, whatever. I, I believe, I recall a conversation about the Friday before winter vacation, and it's typically been a half-day here or an early release day here. And it's not on this calendar, but it's typically been an early release day, and I believe we had a conference.
What did we do this year? Did we do a half-day?
It was half, we had a half-day, but we didn't put it in this year.
And I believe last year's conversation said, you said, that's something that we can expect. And so I want to remind you of that, and have everyone expect it, and then everyone get their great deals and leave on Friday. It's great.
No, that should be, that should be on there. Sorry.
You know why? Because of falling the Friday, like falling.
It's because it's a neat, tidy week. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, but give them a half.
Well, it's good that we're not voting. So that, so just know that is on there, and that's why. And that way we can also solicit and book in the. And I will, I will contact CTA with that change and see if they had any comments on that. So I apologize for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's nice and neat and tidy, but I feel like that kind of day is, if you are accepting it.
And because historically, as we looked way back, it was all over the place. Sometimes it was a full day, sometimes it was a no day, sometimes it was a half-day. It should absolutely be a half-day.
Is this posted to the community? Because it was, I would ask them to be correct, the 22nd, so I do think that's the most likely. Okay.
I'll have that for next.
Doesn't get posted to vote on, right?
Correct.
So I'll have that. It was out in the newsletter or draft.
No, it's not. The only thing that's out on the newsletter is the start of school, which I agree was a certain.
And there have been actually comments in the community that say how helpful it is when they go and say, well, I couldn't decide if I tried it because it's like a nice large font, it says what to expect. That was good.
The plane will stop flying around.
Little banner.
Okay, hearing no other, no others.
When do we need to vote on that?
That'll be next, next week.
So we're considering the second.
Any other questions, comments from the committee? Any comments from the public on?
You know?
All right. So that'll close off our agenda, item B, and we will, as, as previewed, switch to budget resources and governance. And that, that is three sub-bullets. The first one is transportation. Anything quickly on transportation? I think it seems to be, I've not heard any complaints from the community on transportation.
No, I've been able to provide it steadily, and I don't, I don't mean that, I just, you know, I know that was a big goal of ours, so.
A marked difference, though, a lot less emails. That's good. No news is good news on that.
Yes, I enjoy that aspect.
Has the stock finder been able to be implemented on the new buses?
So we're still running initiatives because of the fact that they are they're, they're a different bus. Their bus is from First Student, and I believe First Student has their own GPS. So there's, there's more hurdles to go through with those. I don't know where we are with that. Do you know?
I'm not, I'm not certain that we're gonna be able to make it work, GPS work on your two First Student buses. They use their GPS for their time clocks as well. So in order to put our GPS on, we have to unfllow theirs. So they're trying to find a workaround, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, and that's a problem because that's an equity, where some get it, some don't. But I, I was, we're still, so the answer is unfortunately, yes, we're running into some issues with that.
Can there not be two GPSs in a bus?
Yeah, there, there has to be a solution.
We do that in our car all the time.
There is, where there's a will, there's a way on that.
There sure is, and we just gotta figure it out.
So let's, let's.
So we'll, we'll, we'll focus more on that.
Let's still have a conversation, try to figure it out.
I'm, I'm, I'm guessing that if you get to the right people at First Student, they, there magically will be a way that it gets, it works.
We'll, we'll make it a mission this week, next week.
All right.
We'll at least be able to give any answer on the 15th.
Excellent. All right, so that's our transportation update. Now, food service update. I understand we have a, some substance to the food service update. I don't know who wants to lead this, do you, in some committee or?
I will, well, we have the whole food service committee is right over across from me, and, and I'm also on that. But I'll let Sue, we came up with some really nice ideas. I think they've been referenced in previous meetings, perhaps, of upgrading and improving our, our food service as much as, we're always gonna improve everything. And one of the thoughts was a chef, and we actually have a thought on that, that sort of idea that we, we socialized after meeting, and Sue's taken it to the next level. And so we'd like to present this with the potential for a vote on this on the 15th. And Sue, I'll let you talk about the position.
Share it.
You have, you still are a co-host. All right, you're, you are now a co-host. And you also have the description in front of you as well. There is the.
So there's been lots of talk with our subcommittee about, you know, let's cut out food and most, you know, our offerings. You know, one by a chef, so collaboratively, the Food Service Director Marilyn and I and her team have tried to figure out, you know, what, what's the best case scenario. And here at the high school, we've had one of, one of the leads doing a lot of extra special cooking, like on top of the daily hot meal and all the sides that you can get every day, she's been having a special meal every day, or multiple. So to expand it, we were thinking, you know, we could maybe expand, add a position, increase a position to be a culinary specialist chef assistant to the Food Service Director, who has certification for that kind of stuff for nutrition. She's been somewhat doing it behind the scenes now, but now we want to expand to the elementary levels as well. And we've had her bring, or had, you know, we've experimented with bringing some of that stuff to the, to the elementary level.
So one of the things that we want to be clear on is that we, we need to post this position.
Right.
So this, so what we're really looking at is a, we're back to the idea of the chef, right? And the idea of having a, having a really high-quality person that can help articulate and create menu items, can, can really put their skill into the quality food item working with Marilyn, that we will post a position that will provide the opportunity for anyone out there who turns the position to apply for it, to go for it. And, you know, it was somewhat inspired by some, some staffing we have, but we want to make sure everyone knows this is an open position for anybody who, who may have those skills. So the inspiring thing to me was that we were really looking at adding a position that would upgrade our food services, and this new Culinary Specialist Assistant Food Director would do that. So this is very, and also the funding would be from the revolving account.
Correct.
So this, so it's really, it's a good use of our revolving account because it goes specifically to this. And so we're just, we, we wanted to bring it to your attention, and the actual description is in front of you, and it does explain exactly what this person would do, what the qualifications are. So, and this comes absolutely from that committee and from Mr. McClellan and Mr. Carey and their, their passion for food service, and also from Marilyn Harretton, Food Service Director, who is, is also inspired by this. I am working for it, so.
And this is just a draft. We put something together just, you know, one of the ones were, so we want to bring it to the committee, just have thoughts, make, make changes, everything, and see if it's plus than less than.
Yeah, it's awesome. So if you wanted to have some discussion about that?
Anything from the subcommittee members on, on your deliberations and discussions on this?
Uh, yes. So the idea here was to address what we saw to be you know, glaring deficiency within the district in that we just haven't improved upon our food services in a long time. I mean, I'm looking at these menus, and they remind me of what I was, the options I had when I was a child in elementary school. So I think that our middle, high schools' food service is, is, is pretty good. It's, it's pretty strong, especially given the limited sort of awkward traffic flow and, and, and sort of suboptimal actually dining facility. Our preparation facility is really great, and I think they utilize it pretty well, and they offer the kids a pretty wide range of fresh and well-repared meals. There's some issues that, so this is a standalone issue that will, I think, be something that's residual that we'll need to address and as a procurement issues. I mean, I think I, I, I take issue with the quality of some of the commodity-based products or ingredients we use, like beef patties, chicken patties. They're simply not good, and I don't want kids to, I don't want to serve them. So we need to, but there are strict guidelines with school food and those following those guidelines, so we're gonna have to address how we I, I have to educate myself a little bit more, but this issue, this is a, this was really it's a great last meeting we had. It's one of the best subcommittee meetings I've, I've ever had, really, really encouraging in that you see very clear, definite, and quick tangible progress here in that we were able to identify both a need but also a fairly cost-effective solution, very cost-effective solution. And it's going to, I think, yield immediate benefits, like immediate, we'll see immediate improvement because the idea behind this position is not only to increase the diversity of our daily offerings, but also the, the, the quality of them by trying to source more local ingredients, local fresh ingredients, so more like farm-to-table type stuff. And also the way we broadcast those options to our end users, the students and the families, and advertise what options there are and encourage kids to try new things. And so I, I think we're going to see a much more enriching food service solution just by this one position alone. I think it's gonna be very, very palpable progress, so it's really exciting. And that's sort of the, the impetus behind this particular thing. Again, there's gonna be a second piece to this, which is we have to address that commodity-based ingredients, but, but that's, that's sort of a different thing. So it's gonna be exciting. I do have, as someone saw next to me, I didn't mean for you to see that, I wasn't being rude, but I have significant revisions to the, to the, suggested revisions to the, to the proposed job description. And I'm wondering, we, it's sort of decided on the title of Assistant Director of Food Services while Food Services Director Marilyn Harretton was present. I wonder why we renamed it. Does anyone know?
Dave, Marilyn actually proposed that title.
Yeah, she, she proposed the Culinary Specialist, and, you know, we, we thought it was not necessarily a divergence from Assistant Food Service Director, just an addition. So it would, it's, I guess it would be akin to Leslie being called the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. It's just, this is an Assistant Food Service Director who really specializes in culinary. So we didn't see it as a, we saw it more as a, a, a kind of an explicit, kind of an explanation rather than a detractor from the position, but do you feel otherwise, Craig?
No, I guess, I guess.
What if it was like Assistant Food Service Director colon culinary specialist?
Yeah, something like that. I don't know. It's just, yeah, the way it is written, the way it's delivered seems strange to me. It's also Assistant Food Service Director, it should be just Assistant Director of Food Services. Marilyn is titled as, not Food Services Director, right? It's Director.
It's Director of Food Services.
Right, so it needs to reflect that.
So it'll be Assistant Director.
This is just, I'm, I'm getting in and in the degree that I just, it seemed different than what we agreed on at some of these, so I, you know.
It is, it is. The Culinary Specialist came from Marilyn.
All right, so that's fine, because the Assistant Director of Food Services came for two, so that's, that's fine. I, I own the Culinary Specialist in there. It's, 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 it's good because it sort of makes sure that, that it captures that, that the, the.
What if it was the Assistant?
We can refine this.
Yeah, yeah.
Going forward, we're gonna do it right here at the, at the full committee meeting. The, the, the point is here's an outline. There will be some changes, but the, we've heard the, as a committee, the high-level plan. And I think I also heard, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Sue, but I think I also heard this is all but self-funding out of, out of the revolving.
It is awesome.
So we don't have a necessary budget.
How did the?
I was just about to ask, any, any questions from the, from the committee? And I would direct them to Mr. Carr and Ms. Inon, because I know Mr. Carey is, is in, on the subcommittee, was involved deeply in discussions, so I'm assuming he has.
He's in the know.
He's in the know.
I'll make mine if I have to ask.
If you wanna make, if you wanna make a point, if that's all right, you can.
No, I can be up to my.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just curious about preparation location. So if this person is doing specialty meals, are they all being prepared at the high school and then have transported?
That's a really good question.
And the transport is done how?
Not all of them are prepared at the middle high school, but some of them will be. Some of them are capable of being prepared at Deer Hill. Some of them are being, are capable of being prepared at Osgood. So there may be a trickle-down or there may be individual preparations done in each kitchen. I asked the same exact question. So the transport, we have, we have a van, a food services transport wagon.
And a transporter. Yes, yes.
That's how it's physically transported.
And is it main menu and specialty meals or just an overhaul of, or an overhaul of the main menu?
I think it would depend on what that item is. It depends on what it is and where it can be prepared or needs to be prepared in comparison to what our capabilities are. They, they do differ, obviously, you know that, in each school.
I do know that. And so here's a continuation of that question. Would they be kind of rationed so that no matter what lunch you have, you have an opportunity? Because, for example, my third grader who has the earliest lunch and my fifth grader who has the latest lunch often talk about how the third grader had better options because she had lunch earlier in the day and the fifth grader had nothing left because she's latest in the day. I am not at lunch, this is just a sister conversation, but I feel like there's something to it.
So this is really good student feedback, right? So that's something I hadn't asked about because I wasn't aware of.
Right, and your kids aren't at the same school right now, so they don't even have the same.
Right, that's not acceptable, right? Like, see, that's not acceptable.
Yeah, like, if it's Ice Cream Friday, did everyone get a chance to get ice cream? If it's Taco Tuesday, prepared by the culinary specialist, did everyone get a fish taco option?
I think sometimes when they're trying to make many options, then it gets tough to.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. It's like, if you're letting off the gas and pushing in the clutch, which one are you pushing, like?
Well, so I would say.
Are you going in the right direction? How do you have enough of each? Do you get chicken tenders or do you get this, like?
It may take, it may take some, it may also take some time for them to understand what the demand is for each of those items in each school and, and then they'll, they'll learn, because they do have their fingers to the pulse in terms of like what menu items are more popular with kids. Obviously, as they roll out new ones, they won't have any idea who's going to like them. It also might take a little while to catch on, you know, Billy and Jimmy got that and, you know, then word cut on to Sally, Jack, and whoever, that it's really good and now they want it next time. So, you know, we don't.
I just think like, okay, I see the social media part. I'm like, all right, am I following class of food services on Instagram? So on Sunday night, I can say to my kids, hey, do you want the courage chicken salad on Wednesday with mango chutney? And they're like, heck yeah, I do. Sign me up for that. And you show up and it may or may not be there, special meal. I don't, it's like a food situation. It's delicious, it's one of my favorite meals, just one of my favorites. But I just feel like, you know, like, how do we make sure that it's, well, they're saying social media, so I'm like, are they? Because I follow it if I knew what to expect.
I, I think there's no good answer question, Ms. Seon, because to me, that, that reflects any, any sort of food service facility or entity in, in the world, right? Like, they're, they're made, they have to manage their, their inventory, they have to, I think they do the best to.
It's just that, like, we're forcing kids into time slots for lunch.
Sure.
So.
Sure.
So that shouldn't be the discrepancy, like, sorry, you have the 110 lunch, so you're never getting a special meal.
They, they may be able to, like, yeah, like you said, regressing certain amounts for each lunch, and then when you run out at that lunch, you run out, but then the next lunch gets equal, you know, opportunity for, fine. But that, that still might result in your child not getting it, even if they had that product, because it was so popular and they were last in line.
Right.
But, you know, so I, I don't know, these are, like, as, as, as the chair pointed out, I think, you know, there's a, you know, probably a bunch, a bunch of things that we have to figure out that we're not going to solve today. But I, I was really proud of this, this solution that, that we came up with in collaboration with everybody, Superintendent, Director of.
Yeah.
Food Services Finance and, and, and Director of Food Services. It was, it was great, it was a really, it was a team effort and it was, it was exciting. So I think, I think, I think we need to give a lot of credit to our Director of Food Services, so I think a lot of time and thought into it, too.
Absolutely, yeah. And I think there's some exciting, and, and, you know, the reason we're bringing this to your attention is to work out some details, so, you know, we can meet as a, a committee again, the subcommittee, to, to review the job description. And you said you had some revision ideas?
Yes.
And that, this is a first, this is a first one, because Sue said this is a draft, and that's precisely what we're doing.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Carr, anything from you?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Do you have, do you have some?
I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I would want to hear, I want to hear, I, I just feel like I've been upfront the whole time.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've been missing this.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm ready for it.
Well, I, I love what he was saying about like getting feedback from the kids, right? So maybe we can have a survey to the parents and to the children, get their feedback. But I do want to echo what Craig was saying, the fact that this is something that I was just doing in soup, I don't think, the other team too, like, when you go to a meeting and they already kind of figured it out, it's kind of cool, like, you know, you, it's not like getting on this meeting saying, I think we should do this. It was just, it was really.
That's nice.
Uplifting to say, all right, well, they got a plan. This is, this is such a great plan, because not only did they address what Craig was talking about, because a lot of it's the ingredients that we have. So for us lately, well, then we ask them to look at the ingredients, where do we buy our programs? Is, is, is opportunities to buy it locally, the opportunity to educate kids on when we're telling kids to eat their vitamins or eat their vegetables at home, you know, we're not the only ones saying, you know, perhaps to have the school say, hey, listen, a pepper's important because of nutrients and vitamins that can fight off disease that are in that fruit. I, I just think that's wonderful to get that educational standpoint, because, you know, how important is to read nutritionally, right? You know, you don't know how many sugars are in soda, but if you looked at a 20-ounce, like, I could say to my child, if they were going to drink a 20-ounce Sprite, I could say, why are you doing that? That is 17 teaspoons of sugar. Why? Because there's 90 grams of sugar divided by four, 17.4. And you get those little Dunkin' Donuts packets and you can count them. See? That's what they taught you in school. So it just reiterates what we're doing at home.
That's great. Well, my, my sincerest thanks to our Food Service Subcommittee and Mr. McClellan and Mr. Carey individually for their tenacity in making this happen, and also the administration and to our Food Service Director. It is very gratifying to me as a committee member to see problems raised, addressed, and then solved in a way that this is done. So I commend you for what you've done here and look forward to learning from you on how you were able to solve problems quickly and, and get actionable solutions so that we can apply that in other areas. So thank you very much and look forward to the final proposal.
Yeah, it's going to lead to a great solution. Thank you, Sue, for really driving the focus.
So that'll conclude our, our Food Service Board. We're still on agenda item F.
The coastal committee.
And Mr. McClellan, you are representative that is on the School Facilities Committee. Do you have any reports from the school's facilities?
I have, yes. Yeah, sir, I'm on a lot of committees, I guess you talk a lot.
You do.
And I, I'll, I'll say here is that, well, I'm, I gotta leave the meeting, this meeting moment, in a few moments, about a half an hour, to go present to the advisory on the School Facilities Committee's request to, for $1.5 million, a warrant article seeking $1.5 million allocation for feasibility study for a renovated or replaced middle high school, which is, all, all that, all that is designed to do is simply give us a parallel path. We're still intending to resubmit an SOI to MSBA to see if we might be able to get some state subsidy, but, but we also are aware of how many districts that are similar in, in many characteristics, including demographics to capacity, have waited for several years before being invited in the program, some of which ended up going out, going it alone after waiting all that time. You just sort of burn that time. So by doing our own feasibility study, we'd be poised to sort of fuel and board our own train and let it leave the station should we need to at any time and not have to, to wait any longer as the building ages and we spend more and more money on, you know, structural, mechanical, you know, replacements or renovations, things are coming to end of life here in this building. So, you know, trying to be as, as forward-thinking as possible there. In addition to that, the School Facilities Committee is also charged with looking at all capital improvements necessary to maintain our school buildings. And so they're simultaneously starting to prioritize the improvements recommended by the existing condition study that it had commissioned several months ago and it was completed in the spring of 2022. So I think one thing that they're, they will be prioritizing, we're having an executive session relative to these things next week, is the, are the security upgrades that were recommended by AI3. So we're going to be talking about that. Those are sort of the first category of capital improvements that we're considering. So a lot going on with that now, that, that, that can have been a little bit static as we waited in the first spin or the first cycle of the SOI, the MSBA, but now I think it's becoming a little bit more active. So we'll, we'll keep posted as to what happens with the advisory. We'll have to present the same thing I presented to Advisory Day to capital budget as well as select, and then select decides whether it actually becomes a warrant article, if we get a majority vote, select advisory capital or advisory boards that are unelected, so they don't decide one way or the other. But select does and, and then, and then if it goes to town meeting, if it passes town meeting, it will, we'll see it on the ballot, see if the voters want to spend $1.5 million on this.
And Chairman, I haven't mentioned this to you yet, but I would like to potentially bring for a vote for the committee to make, to make sure we make our timelines that we would resubmit the MSBA statement of interest for the middle school and the high school, being the middle high school.
When do you need that vote?
So I, I think, I think it would be good to do, I, I re-looked with, with Craig on, like, the timeline. We have to have the statement of interest submitted by April 14th, which is the day before any rates. So, and then we also, we need the vote from the school, from the select board and from you, so it's going to be timelines. It would be no new information, it's the same SOA, it's just, you know, doing it again, but we do need approval on the 15th, if that's okay. I didn't want to, I didn't want to do that.
I just thought it's not on the agenda for tonight.
As I mean.
We can do it now.
15th of November.
We can put it on that, and we'll, we'll solidify that when we get to future agenda items.
Perfect, perfect, yeah.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. McClellan, for the, for the School Facilities Committee. We'll now switch back and go to agenda item E, which is teacher learning. Dr. Scollins, thank you very much for your patience as we reorder things, but it is not in any way a reflection of our view on the importance of teaching and learning as a school committee. So with that, I'll turn over the floor to you on, for academic initiatives and updates.
Do you have it, right?
I do. Let me just.
Well, she gets that a lot of attention. We want to thank Dr. Scollins. We had a really wonderful professional development for leadership regarding iReady and with a very talented facilitator who brought us through how to really help teachers look at data through the iReady modules. It was, it was really enlightening and also incredibly encouraging because we were able to see some of the growth that our students are making, and Dr. Scollins will be able to update on that today. Great.
All right.
My filibuster was just a little short.
Scramble. So, so just, this is a variety of different things that are happening. We are coming off of vacation, but there are some things that are happening, obviously, because we are a district. So one of the first things that I want to talk a little bit about is MCAS. As you know, we have our, our, our plan as that we want to improve our scores, which really is improving our teaching and learning, and we will see the benefits as our scores go up. But this was a focus for our writing. The middle and high school English departments each took a professional day and, well, they actually sent me a proposal for professional day where they wanted to look at how they were asking questions, reword those questions, and their writing prompts to reflect the MCAS format. And I, I know I already said this, but before the holidays, when we took the break in the winter, I had a meeting with the high school and they were really, really diving into what, how are they asking questions versus how is the MCAS asking questions? And this is a conversation that we've been having all along because they are shifting how they're asking students to think, how they're asking them to respond, which is what we saw in our writing and across the state, actually, not just here. So, so this has been a focus for them and they also worked with Lindsay Kay, which I also mentioned in a meeting in Boston, and she's helping them.
Lindsay Kay.
Oh, it's RT, is our instructional technology specialist at the middle and high school. And so she has been working with them to not only, they're rewriting and rewording, but also putting in a format so that students have that practice in that online format. Because if you remember in the presentation, I showed you the challenges that, that can be when students are going in between two tests, when they have to use tools to highlight and just some of those practicing things. But they both, both depart, both the high school and middle school said that it was amazing and they were so thankful for the day and they really got a lot of work done. So that was really nice. And then also Deer Hill has been working with Teaching and Learning Alliance, TLA, consultants to update the writing prompt and the process for practicing to align.
They have a prompt coming out.
They do, yes, and they're, in fact, they'll be working on it and it will be administered before our PD day on 17th and there'll be some work around that. Anyway, so that's just a little bit of an update. And then here are the dates. They were in the navigator and I thought it would be helpful just to have those up there, but they are posted and then principals are sending those out.
It's a lot of testing.
It's a lot. It's a lot. And our, our fifth and eighth graders have a lot because they have the addition of science, so it's an additional two days. But those are the dates and one of the really neat things that we were able to do, and we, actually, these dates haven't actually been updated because they, they're doing infrastructures right now, testing, in fact, Deer Hill is going to do theirs on Friday. But, or no, it's one, it's Thursday, yeah, Thursday, yeah, thank you. But we think that the middle school thinks that, if you can see, actually, we did move this because their infrastructure was successful. We can do all grades six, seven, and eight at the same time. In the past, we've had to, to have seventh grade do it for two days and then sixth and maybe eighth grade, depending on the numbers. But the fact that we can just do it on the two days makes a huge difference around teaching and learning.
And from a focus standpoint for students and the whole school.
It's amazing, no one got bumped. There was structure training? That's incredible. Isn't that amazing? Nobody got bumped. So that was, that was nerve-wracking, yeah. So that just, it just allows us to have two days of testing.
When you all log into MCAS and you try to start the test.
Oh, the computer.
Some kids started and then get bumped out and then it's so stressful and the kids are, and the teachers are.
It's really good. So Ian Kelly and the team, can't thank them enough. And so, so the middle school will have only the two days of testing per content area versus shutting down the school for four days, six days, because seventh grade's testing, so you can't do this, you know. Anyway, so it's really lovely. So this will be a game changer, yeah. And then allows for more of our education. And then the other thing, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sends out a district and school report card. They do that every year. These have already gone out, you've already received them from your schools, but they are posted on the website. And this is a report that Vessi generates and it's for families and guardians and anybody in the public to be able to see how there's, how districts are succeeding. And so it just kind of gives you some of the basic information about our teachers. It talks about our scores, performance, and so you can kind of go in. So there's a district report card, the whole district, and then each school has their own.
And you put it in the navigator, too?
I did.
And this whole presentation.
Sure. And then.
Before we have the report card, any learnings from the district level on the, on the report card, anything to discuss here subsequently?
We've discussed it mostly because of MCAS.
Right, yeah, really, but MCAS is what we have done. The report card itself. I'm trying to think if there was really, really tie around MCAS is what we were really focusing on. Some of the other stuff is just basic information around the district.
I wish they just made the report card a little bit more, like, like, investering, like, I wish it was just like, you get an A, you get a B, you get a C, you get a D, you know, it's like.
Yeah, there's lots of different components to it, yeah.
It's complex and it's, you know, the, the areas of focus that come out of the report card are the areas of focus we talked about, you know, so.
Yeah.
And so, to be honest with you, not from our perspective, there's nothing revelatory about it. It just, it just kind of encapsulated some of the things. We know we need to work on some of the, some of the things we're achieving.
Well, that, that's also learning, that's also validating that the path we're on, so that's great.
And I could, you know, another point, I could always take, you know, I could always You know, another point, I can always take, you know, I can always do a quick little forward view of what the report card's about. I could, I'm happy to do that. Do you think people would be interested in that?
I, you know, I'm, I'm always a, a, a fan of feedback and.
It's elusive. It's an elusive thing.
Well, it's also nice to know how accountability is measured.
Yeah.
And um, so that, we'd be glad to do that. It'll take some time to go through it.
Yeah, yes, because the accountability too is still a little bit interesting because of coming off of COVID, so it's, so. So I don't even know that we have everything yet. It's starting to come out.
We'd be glad to do that.
But yeah, I could ask.
I don't know if it would be productive right now.
Like April or something.
Whatever you, we want.
Yeah, yeah. So, but happy, yeah, really happy to do that. And now that it's in this digital platform too, it's a little bit different than what you'd be. So, yeah, happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
And then Dr. Sullivan already talked about some of our professional development around data analysis and so Freckle and Associates. What is providing professional development. We got that as a grant. Uh, and so it's been wonderful. We did part. One in the fall and that happened at the elementary and middle schools because they're using the iReady diagnostic. And then today we met with our leadership team and so everyone had the opportunity to work with Michael O'Neil from Freckle and Associates. He's a former principal educator, so he was dynamite. And um, then the afternoon was spent with the reading specialist so that they could dive into the data and see the resources. Um, because when you're using something new, you use what you can, but as you get more practice, was it, then you're more comfortable to dive in more and more. So. Um, that's what happened today. And then we will have two trainers coming in on the seventeenth and they will work with kindergarten through grade eight faculty. And then math, math specials in the afternoon. So um, it's, it's um. It's a great, um, it was just fantastic and everybody walked away with something.
Here's a really good news. This was good today. I, this made my day.
So, um, so winter benchmarks have happened. So three times a year, K through eight, we're doing a benchmark assessment. The one benchmark assessment that's happening, K through eight, is the iReady diagnostic and math and reading. At the elementary level, there's some other assessments that are happening and such as your dibbles and um, there's the writing prompt and some things that, that just happened at the elementary level. Um, but everybody's getting the iReady diagnostic. The middle school has already, they completed theirs earlier than the elementary and they have already sent their family reports home. The elementary family reports are going home on Friday and along with the dibbles family report. There's not one for the, because they don't consider it at the middle school, so there's not one for that. Um, and so I wanted to just give a quick little explanation around what you're going to see. So when you're looking at the iReady diagnostic middle of the year, there's two kinds of growth. You're going to see your typical growth and you're going to see stretch growth. Typical growth is the average growth of a student starting at the same placement level. All right, so that's kind of where they are. And then your stretch growth is the growth needed to close the gap to the proficiency. So designed to put the student on a path to proficiency by the end of the year. All right, so if you just have your typical growth and you are at grade level, you're fine. You're going to get exactly where you need to go. But if you're below grade level. If you hit your stretch, you're going to, you're going to close that gap a little bit small. So that's what we really need to do. All right, now, when you have students that are on IP's who have, you know, two years behind there, they will see growth, but they're also meeting their goals. So that's where it gets a little bit different, but um, it doesn't mean that they can't achieve that stretch growth. It just means it may look a little bit different than, than a student who's not on an IP. Um, and then um, students should be working to achieve at least 50% progress towards their annual typical growth goal right now. Okay?
And those who need to um, really, we focus off of the stretch growth goal. We do that through interventions.
Correct.
So, so if we do see growth. A, a good, a good product and growth, it means to me that our interventions are starting to take hold.
Yes.
And that they're starting to impact the students who mostly.
Correct, correct. And so the, the professional development today was really great too, because it actually gives even more information about how to drill down on this. How to make it easy to really be able to look at the data and look at students and then also the resources that really exist. They need, teachers know about them, but now. It's kind of this direct connection, which is really nice today. Um, like I said, the more you use it, the more comfortable you become and then your ability to work. So this is um, the district's um, iReady math diagnostic. So if you can see here, um, to the left. It says progress to annual typical growth. So that should be at 50%. So that would mean, and it's looking at the median, right, the middle. So 50% were below, 50% are above, like that's how that would work. We are at 68%. So that means that we have students that are, we have students above and below, but we've, we're, we're past our 50. We've already moved past where we would typically go. So that's really solid growth.
So that means sixty, sixty-eight percent of the students tested are in excess of 50% of their goal? Or is that, all the students are 68% of the way? Okay.
Right, so if you had, so let's say we had multiple people here, right, sixty and, and, and some were below, some were above, but we ended at sixty, that's the middle.
The median student is 68% of the way to the goal.
Correct. And we're supposed to be fifty, so we're like 20%.
Fifty is typical, fifty is typical growth.
Yes.
So that's, so that's, that's, I view that as very good.
It's really, really, this is really nice.
They instructed it too.
He did too. He's like, you guys, this is amazing. So.
We're happy.
What does that look like compared to last year's splits?
We haven't gotten that far because we've just completed it. So we haven't really got.
But we did it last year, all, all three, right? Beginning, middle and.
Did, but I don't have that right here. Yeah, we have, no, and we haven't really been able, we haven't done that deep dive completely yet because they just finished up. So um. I'd like to see that in the future. I will.
Because that's what I do. People look like that and put it sexy.
So I understand it and I will. Um, these are just quick snapshots, but I thought it would feel good moments, so I wanted to share.
It's a good moment. I feel like you would feel even better if you looked at it compared to last year.
You know us, focus on the negative. So, you know, we're very skeptical, right?
Well, it might be more impressive.
Well, I will tell you this too.
It's going to look better.
Yeah, it's good. This is going to look better.
Kids get better at taking these diagnostics. They just know how to take it.
Yeah, and I, and I will admit this too, is that I saw this and I, and, and I saw the reading data and I said, this looks really good, but I'm still so new at it. So I didn't really want to even say anything and put these in until I talked to the, the gentleman today. So I'm like, these look really good, right? Like, am I missing something? So. Um, so that's math and then it's broken down here by school, just so you can see. So if I, so if you look at the. If you look, it's really just the middle school, it's not the high school. It's just that that's how it's, it's labeled. But look at 78%, so 41% already met their typical growth. For the year, you see? And then if you look at Deer Hill, 68%, that's our median, right? So that's in the middle, past our 50. And then 30% have already met their typical growth. And at the Ozgood, 66%, 29% have already met typical growth. Which is amazing. And that's across those grades. Now, I want to take you to the right and look at the annual stretch growth. We should be, by the end of the year, 20 to 30% meet their stretch growth. So we'll get the median already. So 39%. For, um, for the middle school, Deer Hill's 46, Ozgood 47. These teachers and the, and the interventions, they are working so hard. And really targeting what they need to target. Um, and then if you look at the column over to the right where it says met. And we have 13% have met their stretch goals, 10% and 12%.
Already.
Already.
And what, and what did you say we should have?
Around 20, 30.
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year.
Okay.
Or, or no, I shouldn't say it that way. Students meet 20%, it's like 20 to 30%. Will meet their stretch growth. Yes, right, yeah. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
All right, so, and then you can see that second, see that.
So, so can I, the progress, so this is annual stress growth, progress. What does that dominate those? That's.
Annual progress. So that means that's that number where if you took all the students and that median number, 78%. Right, that is that median where there's below and above. Right, should be 50, right? But we're 78, so there's 78 is below, there's students below and above 78.
And where should we be on the stretch?
Our medium score is 50.
So stretch should be 52?
Oh, no, 50, no, not stretch. Stretch is, um, well, end of the year, 20.
End of the year, 20.
20, 30%.
And right now we're at 39. So that's, that's, that's what I wanted to get to.
Right, we're already, we've already.
So, so that progress.
We've already met. We're already in our stretch.
Okay, so remember, this is halfway through the year.
Right.
That number that says progress median is where, where we are right now. And according to Dr. Scollins, that should be at 20. We're already at 39 at the, at the middle school, 46 at Deer Hill and 47 at Ozgood. And the percent that are supposed to meet by the end of the year, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be at.
So, no, okay. It's okay. So 20, 20 to 30% is the, is for stretch growth. So that's really how many students will get there. Right, so it's not, it's not as, they're not going to hit 100% stretch growth. You're just not going to have a good one. But your progress for your annual typical growth, you want them to hit 100%, but we're at 50 right now because we're halfway through the year. But we're way past 50. So our kids have already, are already above where they need to be.
So, so we've got two columns.
Not all, not, not all, because you remember there are students that are, right, there's below and above.
So what I'm, what I'm grasping for, I think, what questions are, is benchmarks. So we've got, let's look at stretch growth. We've got two columns, we've got progress and we got percent net.
Right.
Progress, that says 39.
Right.
So if I, so if I'm trying to assess whether that's good, where, where, where should that? Is that, is that what should be at 20?
Not even, that's not till the end of the year, 20 to 30.
So, so this is 30, we're already 39% progress and at the end, if that's middle of the year.
We've hit the 39, right. So we should hit 20 to 30 and right now we're already at 39.
And then what do I do with that?
But not for every student.
Right, that's the median. What do, what do I do with that percent net? What's the benchmark for that?
13% have already met their stretch goal.
And what do we expect that to be?
That, that's that final year of 20 to 30% of that stretch.
That should also be 20 to 30.
Right, so it's above there. It's above the, the typical growth. It's their stretch growth.
So we're, we've, we've, we've totally knocking out of the park on the progress. And we're halfway, we're already halfway there on the percent net, which puts us, sounds like it puts us on target.
For many.
Right.
For many. You have to remember, not all students, right?
Because the stretch goes harder to me.
Yes.
So you're not going to have 50% at this point in math. But the fact that we have 39% is really hard.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's great.
And then if you just.
Sorry, is there, I do, but I can wait until you're finished.
I'm just going to point out that, see, it says percentage of students with improved placement, you see all the way over. So it's this, it's that second till. Second to last at the right column, right? Student success just gives you the number, but in that column, right there, that shows you how many students, a percentage of students who have improved and moved up. A grade, so the 39% at the middle school, 54 and 57% respectively. So that's really good news too.
That's great.
I'd be very curious to see like a scatter plot of this data because it's great that that's where the median is, but I'd like to see like more representative of the district, just for future reporting.
Right, right.
Um, yeah, and I. Because the median is the median, but then there are, we're concerned about all of it.
And right, and so we did talk about that today, right? So you, you want to remember too, you know, high growth, high, high achievement. Right, and then you also have high growth, low achievement.
Right.
Right, so there's, there's, there's four quadrants, right? There's also, um, low. What did I say? So I said, I, I'm like trying to say.
I did that too.
High achievement, right? And then we have high growth, a low achievement, then we have low growth, low achievement.
And low growth, high achievement.
Low growth, high achievement, which can happen because it is an adaptable, um, assessment. So if you're already at grade level. You know, you can, because it's only going to push you as hard as you can go. If you're at a grade level, then you're okay.
That grade level is the base.
Yes.
Like that's, you gotta have every day a grade level. And, but, and then you really worry about those who have.
Yeah, low, low achievement.
Low achievement, low growth.
I'm trying to picture the reports that we get at home and obviously I look at them, but I haven't memorized them. Is there, and so obviously there's the benchmark goal on the graph. Is there an aim line so that like if a kid is achieving, so we can see?
So you'll see your typical growth is on the family report and it will talk to you about what their growth and, yeah, so it'll tell you what the typical growth is. Where their stretch growth would be and it tells you if they're, you know, on a very level or, okay.
Dr. Scollins, is there, are you?
I'm not, yeah.
Is there a way to, do we have the ability to compartmentalize the, our population of students? That are on IEPs?
So, so today that came, um, that came up and so we actually can, we don't have it on, on this program right now, but we can.
Yeah, so I mean, you might not have an app, but you, you, you think you need it.
We were, we were literally enabling these things and writing them down as we, as we were listening.
And we were, and we were changing.
Ask the same questions.
Okay.
We did, yeah.
So that would be, yeah. Did you present that at some point?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, this is.
I'd be interested to see how our.
There was a lot of excitement in the room this morning.
Okay.
Everybody was.
Okay, all right. All right.
Yeah, so we don't have demographics on here. I don't, so, but we can. So I'm working with them to kind of look at, because things came up today. So then. Okay, good. The reading, yeah, fantastic. Okay, so here's reading. Um, yeah. That was really pretty.
That jumped up the page, yeah.
Well, 91, right, so 91%, that's the median. So obviously there's students below, but there's students above, right? So 91 is amazing.
What is this attribute? That's like a.
So I would, I would, well, you have to remember, kids are back in school, right? You're right, there's no rest. We are really targeting, we have had TLA in now for two years, working with our teachers. Um, it's embedded PD, so they're, they're working. Um, in real time, learning how to do better at making small group instruction. How do you target kids? Um, our, we're looking at our, like our whole, our core, well, this is a core instruction, right? So just the core instruction alone. Haggerty was put in also this year for our K twos. Um, I think that probably has it. Our dibbles scores, I don't have all of it to, to share because I just have, whether it is, but I'm just, but I did meet quickly with the reading specialist and. The reading specialist, Ozgood, was like, hey, our dibbles is reflective of this. And I said, that's awesome.
We did get our dibbles reports from Deer Hill and there's a huge growth.
There are, but like I haven't gotten all, like I didn't have it here to do all of it, yeah, because this is so, this is just finishing up the window. Yeah, so it, it was really reflective.
Must say, I also think that our interventions.
Well, that was my next part. So then we're really targeting, um, our interventions. We are looking specifically at what does that child need? Um, and not just saying, hey, so and so can't read. That's not helpful. What is preventing so and so from not being able to read? Um, and so I think that's, um, that's been extremely helpful. Our MTSS, that process has gotten tighter. I just think, um, it's been, it's just been a combination of things that have really helped us. So this was, um, very, very nice to see. And then again, the growth is.
Be nice to see a little bit more.
It's so slow on mine. It's not moving on my screen the same.
It should go, you go back one slide, Dr. Scollins. It would be good to see us reduce that yellow area a bit though.
Of course.
That's, yeah, that's, so that's, that's obviously, that's, you have 78% on or above grade level. That's, that's a little over the, you know, not to rain on everyone's parade, but you know, I think we have to acknowledge that.
Yeah, it's, the achievement is not what we want.
Right, but our, but our growth, remember our growth, like we're closing the gap.
Sure, but I just, we didn't touch on that at all and I want to, I mean, we've got, we've got to acknowledge that. I mean, that's, 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 that's clear.
We're excited about growth right now.
Sure, sure.
And we're not, and we're not ignoring that.
When I see 25% of our kids, you know, below grade level, that's, you know, that's something we need to address.
Right, absolutely. And that, and, and our hopes are, right, as we continue to, to get, to get better at this and we will continue to.
So also it's important to remember that in data meetings, guys, while you're debating the percentage math right now. Um, when this data is pulled and then we sit down as a team, there's a cross reference done of, okay, here are our numbers here. Here's who's in the green, here's who's in the yellow, here's who's in the red. Let's make sure every single one of those kids in yellow and red is receiving, is really there. Like, does that reflect their performance or did they just have like a really bad day and they actually had strep and didn't know it?
Okay, okay.
And.
That could be the 2%.
Are, are we also, are we giving small group help in class? Are they getting intervention with a reading specialist or math specialist? Because we happen to be looking at the reading slide, or they are an IP. So you kind of go through and figure out, here's who falls into that category. Why is that happening? And then you're going to pull anecdotal evidence also from teachers to say like, oh yeah, poor kid, like. They got their seat moved two days before and they were just still grumpy over it and had a bad, you know, like.
So you can dial, you can dial down into that level?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there's so many more. There is, yeah.
Then you can dial down into resources.
Right, and there's, yeah, there's specific resources that are targeted exactly to which domain or which skill that student needs. Yesterday, Deer Hill had their data meeting, um, with, uh, it reading, of course, both Alex and the reading specialist. Uh, both said, oh, wish we'd had this training like the day before this one, but, um, but it was really good for them to hear because they're really talking about. Not only our core instruction, but looking at students, looking at the data and then saying, okay, what tier two interventions are teachers doing? Because that's, you know, just because a student is struggling doesn't mean they immediately go out to a reading specialist. We need to address it because. In the classroom, with that classroom teacher. So building their skill level, not being able to do that, um, and having them have the resources and this is a great. Um, this has a lot of resources in it. So I think that that is very, it's very comforting for teachers too to be able to pull something that's so targeted.
Yeah, I think this is just a, a, it's, it's a data point, but this is going to be part of our data story. And we need a district data story and we need individual children. And we need a district data story, and we need individual children to have data stories, and we need to be able to project them. So that's what we're doing, this is, this is an important tool, but it's a tool that shows some, that we're doing some good things.
I think it also shows like why we had this shift in this new position and having these data dialogues, because with this kind of data, there's so much to work.
That's exactly correct.
Right, and to have someone who's an expert in it.
The hour moved right there, that's why we're doing it.
Oh, it's cutting edge.
And to be having, to be using the same language throughout the district guided by this person is gonna be really impactful.
And we had, and even though the I Ready data, um, and the diagnostic is only K through eight. We had high school at the table today too, and so they have access to this now, so that generated a whole other conversation around being able to have those for transitions and data dialogues, and how could we use it? So if you could, so if you look at, um, yeah, so the middle school, um. Yeah, that's some serious growth, yeah.
Well, the guy, the, the, the facilitator today, he went crazy on that, he was like, this is.
I was like, I hope you're sharing this with us.
Something's going on, but, but it is impressive.
Yeah, so, um, but it really, it just really talks about the fact that we really are targeting, and we are, our core instruction is getting stronger. Um, and our interventions are getting stronger, and, and we have students who are, which is really nice, right? So, um, but you can see our typical growth, and then again, look at our stretch growth especially. Uh, I mean, it's all good, but if you look at, um, Deer Hill and Osford, those are crazy numbers. So, because again, we're only twenty, by the end of the year. So if you look at the typical growth, and you look at that progress median, if you look at the net, so fifty-two percent, forty-nine, forty percent have already met their typical growth mid-year. And then if we look at our progress, um, for our stretch, or annual stretch, and look at how many have met that. Twenty-five percent, twenty-five and nineteen percent have already met their stretch growth.
Yes.
The testament.
At the first one, yeah. Obviously, the teachers will get.
For, for sure, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, they're gonna get, they'll get all of it.
Buildings are able to see this.
They were very happy, and again, look at how many students have, um, improved their placement, so moved up a grade, so forty, fifty, sixty percent.
So we want to start seeing this in all of our data points, not just I Ready, but that's the idea.
Right.
How long have we used I Ready?
This is only our second year, as a diagnostic.
Are you worried, has the, has the vendor made any significant changes to their programming algorithms or anything?
Took a phone.
The one year, they ever said, hey, by the way, we have a new model, we have a new.
No, the only thing they did do was they, they moved from, um, they had three, three levels that you could kind of aggregate and grade. So that's just a little bit different, no, not, they haven't changed this part of it. Also, so you know, it's one of very few kind of assessment programs and systems that's considered really good and is separate from small areas. Yeah, so like as other districts are shifting over, this is on the shortlist, just basically. It is, and, um, one of the four students in the United States, no. Or, uh. I forget how many, I shouldn't say that, remember, he said the number of, how many students in America were using it?
A, a huge purpose of this, that's both math and reading in one, so it's.
My stock and I ready.
I think you missed it, yeah, already done, yeah. Um, and so. So it was nice news, so I wanted to share that with you, but, um, yes, happy, happy to share more and more data as we, um, as we continue to it. Um, so then, um, also, T L A is working, as you know, with our elementary reading, uh, teach, well, reading specialists and our teachers around reading, and so the reading specialists had a professional development day. They went down to Madam at Elementary School on Plymouth for vacation, and they observed readers workshop in action, and then they were also able to meet with the reading specialist and literacy country, so it was really nice, they had a really nice time, it's just so good to get out and talk to others. Um, and they could see really, um, this school's been doing this for quite some time, so they could see what it would look like to grow. So, and, and that's really helpful for them, because their role, um, is, they're still learning this process. Um, but eventually they'll, they're taking a role in facilitating, um, professional development teachers and helping them and coaching them.
That's so nice for them to get out.
It was really nice, it's my old job, they did it well.
They, yes.
And then, uh, Deer Hill Literacy Night, they had a, um, evening where they talked about reading and the com, our comprehensive literacy approach. That was on February sixteenth, so for vacation, but Sarah McDonald and Jenna Ellis did a nice job. Um, I don't remember it, how many families were there?
There weren't a tremendous amount of. There, there weren't a lot of families, but they were very active, and, uh, it was, it was, they did a great job.
Yeah, so, um, so that was really great, and then Osford had their second curriculum night last night on social emotional learning, and you can see that.
That was the, uh.
Yes, that the whole, um, they were, yes, in responsive classroom, how we greet students every day. Um, comes in a variety of different ways that we do it, but we do greet, um, and it's practice on looking at someone's eye, greeting them, saying their name, and that person reciprocating that. Uh, and so they do it in plenty ways sometimes, in serious ways, um, but you can see, um, there were several teachers that volunteered their time to come in and facilitate what it's like to be in responsive classroom at the grade level, so it was a kindergarten class, a first grade class, and a second grade class, and prior to that, um, Principal Farrell, uh, Mr. Hidden and Ms. July all presented around some of the regulation, what they do with students, to help them calibrate and understand their feelings.
The group plan.
And the group plan, how important is group planning? Um, one of the things that we are trying to, uh, get off the ground, we'll see, um, is, uh, I, the district has received a grant. And it's, um, for a Vacation Accelerated Math Academy, and so it is, um, for grades three through ten. It will happen, uh, Tuesday through the Friday of April vacation, it is a full day of math. And, um, we'll send out a survey to families, uh, probably this week, to gauge if there's interest, I have posted the positions. Um, it will be small group instruction, it will also fall similar to what we did in our summer learning, where, um, we will prioritize students with special needs. Students who, um, are English learners, students who have been identified at risk or are already receiving services in mathematics. Um, they will be given priority, it is small construction, more than ten to twelve students, and it is, um, problem-based. We'll also be serving lunch, it's a full day, um, and we will have a specialist there too to bring up the day, give them some sort of activities, so.
Yes, there is a question, does the grant say it has to be funded either?
Well, yes, it has to be twenty hours, we, and because it's, you know, from this launch.
Okay, I just, yeah, it has to be. Other models, but I know grants determine a lot of what hours are.
So this, it had to be during that week, so if you, if you didn't have a holiday on Monday, which.
Which Massachusetts does, it's a Massachusetts holiday.
Yeah, there was a February one, and then also.
Which also a holiday, so you.
They all have a holiday, so, yeah, so it was a little bit interesting, so it has to be, yes, it is full day, so. Yeah, so we'll see, and we'll see if parents are interested in it, and, um, and, um, hopefully, hopefully they will be, I think it'll be really nice.
Right.
Uh, and this is just kind of a sample of what it would look like. Uh, you can just see, like I said, we'll have, um, they're gonna have some breakfast, they'll have a kind of big problem to solve within that time. And it's a very hands-on approach, they're not sitting at their desks just doing calculations, this is a very hands-on experience, they have a specialist lunch, and then they'll have another problem, then it'll wrap up, so it is a full day, so if parents wanna do it, they do have to commit to the four days, and they do have to commit to the full day.
Great.
And, um, and then we are going to have our kindergarten jumpstart program, this is just a thing that, right? So it was so successful last year, but Phil Farrell, um, had brought the idea, so we will be doing that August ninth and tenth. She's, she's probably already let incoming parents know, but, um, that will be happening also, it's about an hour and a half, um, for each day. And it's just a really nice way for them to get to know this school before they get there, they kind of get rid of those jitters.
Should get back on the calendar? Like, when we have the district calendar go out, should it be noted on there?
When, yes.
The August ninth and tenth on here, because.
Um, well, are we gonna put, that's a, I don't know, because we have to think about, are we gonna put like accelerated math? I'm not saying no, we just, I think we have to consider.
I'm only asking because.
It's not bad.
I feel like with incoming kindergarten families, they're not, like, yeah, I know they're in the loop, they've registered, but it's like not, you're not necessarily fully in the goings on, and you're not just like, oh yeah, I got this thing that came home in my folder and that.
I, I just feel like.
It might be a helpful thing to have on there, and they're like, oh, look. And you don't wanna be like the three kids who didn't go.
Like, I wouldn't put the other stuff on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, because we don't.
It's kind of like an orientation.
That's, that's kind of what I was thinking about, it's, it's not.
Anyway, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because I feel like with incoming families, yes, of course, some are younger children in a family, but some are, and so it's helpful to know. So, all right, I'll stop.
Good, good, really good suggestion.
And then, um, and then, slide, so we have recycled parts. Um, and so this is an annual recycled and found art event open to the entire community, and so I had actually in from Woods and Stephanie Moriarty in my office today explaining this to me, um, and so it's to promote artist, artistic creativity and the environment. Um, students, families, local artists, and businesses are invited to exhibit a piece of art they have created of objects being saved from the trash and landfills. Um, art can be created by using cans, old fabric, paper towel rolls, the ideas are endless, so they're inviting everyone to participate, it is on, uh, March fourteenth. At six-thirty, I believe, if you want to participate, I think you come a little bit early, but if you want more information, um, this will be in the navigator. I know it's already gone out, and, um, and also, they've already made connections with people in town, some of the businesses, so um, it's a big deal, it's been around for a long time, I didn't realize it, because, because COVID happened, so I didn't know about it, but.
It, it's great.
Yeah. Yeah, and so they come with the art already made, yes, you bring it and you make it, and then it's, they just have, um, it's set up like. Yeah, people can go around, so, and anyway, so if school committee wants to have a, um, a project, you can go and, and build something or, uh. Yeah, so anyway, but it's, so, but lots of people do it.
People call, roll Craig McCloud.
But it's for the community, so, uh, so students do it, then also families do it, everyone, businesses coming and doing it, so, yeah, so it's really nice. So I'm really excited to actually experience it, because I haven't had the chance to do that yet, so that's on Tuesday, the, uh, March fourth.
So this was advertised to the elementary school from high school students.
Yes.
And my, uh, six-year, seven-year-old came home and started rifling for the trash to start his art project, which was a volcano.
There you go.
Cool, so that was.
Yeah, there's a lot of enthusiasm about this, I'm glad to know you were supposed to arrive, the message I got was, you show up and make it there, so.
That would've been a different type of art, here's my pile of materials.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so show up with your, with your piece.
Great, all right. Does that conclude your, your presentation?
Sure does.
So thank you, Dr. Scholz, any, um, questions and comments from the committee to, uh, Dr. Scholz on, um, teaching and learning?
Congratulations. Yeah, we're, we're very excited, very excited, this is good.
Principals and teachers have worked so hard, and they really.
Bro shot me on.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I do, uh, this is great, this is awesome, and I think, you know, people should be rewarded if they do well. I mean, this is something as a district, we should be rewarded, and that brings me back to, uh, what, uh, said last, it was last week when I brought up uh, not honoring the honor. You were told that most of us students are on the honor.
Huge amount, yeah.
However, I think we should honor the high honors, because that's straight A's. And, you know, I, I really do, I, I, I think that if you have a child with centers on us and, and the honor, you wanna try to pop them up on to get on the honor, so I, I, I really do, I, I do think that, and I've heard from, I've asked the community about it too, I kind of like. So I'm happy to have you. You know, and, and my daughters work hard in their, to, for, for this whole year, you know, they don't care either way, but I kind of do. I mean, if we're gonna honor kids in sports.
I feel like though, Paulie, is it for the kids or is it for the parents? Because I personally, as a teacher, am anti, like, giving out of certificates, I just feel like it's very much like this kid's already doing well, and now we're putting them up on this kind of level, like, now you get a certificate. And there are just some kids who, no, who are like never gonna get it, and it stinks for them, and it's just like.
Never gonna get a thousand points playing basketball. We're gonna come out and honor a kid who did. You know, I, I just think that.
I'm not saying I support that.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, I get it, I get it, I just.
So, uh, you, you're raising a good point, and as we can see, there's, there's points for discussion there.
Yeah.
But it is something that we might consider at a, at a future time.
Maybe like a mail home, I just think like.
Yeah. It's just a comment.
So, um, I'll offer, Dr. Scholz, obviously, this is incredible stuff. And I think the thing that's most impactful to me about this is that it is showing directly the results of the investments we've made in our schools, and the changes that we've made. And you can see it in, both of these results were incredible, but you can see it in the reading results. We've invested, when I joined this committee, we were investing in reading, wow, we have reading improvement.
Yeah.
And now you look at our budget requests, we're investing in math, and that's gonna catch up, so this is, this is huge. And it shows that what we're doing is working, and so as we're working through our budgeting process and talking to people, these are numbers that we should put out there to show, look, getting us these extra resources isn't just pie in the sky, it shows, we, we have actual evidence that this is working for our students, that our students are getting a better education, they're doing better because we're able to provide them with the resources we need, so. Um, I think this underscores the budget requests that we've made. Uh, and that the way that you as an administration are deploying the resources that we have is working for our students. And so I'm very excited about that, and I'm very, very excited about this meeting next year, uh, and see what those numbers look like, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, and, um, let's make sure we continue to tell that story, not only in the context that, hey, we're doing well, but also you know, that, that the things we need, uh, will make us be able to do better, so, thank you. Um, with that, we've now gone through A, B, C, D, E, F, uh, and two G. Uh, this is our community relations and communications, do we have any reports on our liaisons, our subcommittees? I'll just open the floor.
Oh, yeah, we have to talk about preschool reason, um, tubes for that.
I saw the handout, but I don't see on.
They would talk about it in the subcommittee, so it just, we need to get it on the, so we can have a different process.
So, so we can, we can go to this as a report from subcommittee as to what the recommendation is.
And then we can put it on the agenda for discussion on the fifteenth, and then for a vote potentially on the twenty-ninth.
Yes.
So, no, that's, that's correct.
Floor is the, um, I, is this the, um, budget resources subcommittee?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor.
Well, and this is, this is just a, uh, like I said, we're just throwing it out there, I'm seeing, trying to get.
I can read eighteen. So it, it gives you, um, it gives you, pre, pre-school tuition comparisons. Um, what it looks like currently, our current tuition is twenty-eight hundred, um, we have sixteen peers, and it shows you the cost of program. It's one sixty-one, the revenue coming in is forty-four thousand eight hundred, um, so the, the school budget is supporting one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, um, for next year, the second classroom, we'll see, uh, it's twenty-eight hundred dollars, the cost would be twenty-three thousand. Revenue's eighty-nine, so then the shortfall, the budget picks up, is the one seventy-nine. Um, try to show you, you know, what other public preschools are asking for for similar programs, so you can see Waymess. Uh, the thirty-four, eighty-five, you know, relative, three thousand, three thirty, Dupesbury's at thirty-eight, Kingston's at three thousand, England's at twenty-seven hundred. Massey Road situated twenty-five, and then the town private preschools obviously are much higher, the county child's at six thousand four hundred nine. Social community center is five thousand five hundred and five. So, off to the right, say, cost to support the program with a tuition increase, and that proposal, um, and we work with the director of the student services office as well, so she's on board. Um, it shows you if, if it didn't increase, um, from twenty-hundred to three thousand versus twenty-hundred to thirty-two hundred. And what the cost would be, obviously the same, the revenue, um, would be nine-six thousand or like two thousand, and the difference would be one sixty-seven or one sixty. But at least with this increase, it would support one whole classroom. So, you know, ideally, we try to, uh, tuition-based revolve, and we try to at least cover fifty percent through tuition, a fifty percent of budget increase, who's that for that, um, for that way here, um, so we're trying to at least balance it a little bit, um, and helps support the program. So, I mean, that's short view, is doing these tuition save or the recommendation is to increase it.
So what, what is the cost, and I, I'm not, I'm not calculating, but what's the cost for? But what's the cost per, per, per student? I'm seeing how the math winds up. Maybe it doesn't wind up that way.
It's 2,800 dollars.
I'm sorry, cost to the district.
Cost to the district.
Yeah. So like for fiscal year 2316 years, the cost is 161?
So the cost to the school budget is 116,200.
116, that, that's, that's with the $44,000 offset revenue, meaning the expense, I guess I should call the expense associated with the fiscal year 2316 is 116, which is about, which is about $10,000 for people, right?
But we have many more pupils than that because we're just calculating peers, right? Like in this program, there are a lot of kids because the kids who are online, they aren't charged.
So the kids who are in specialty, you know, and you do not pay, like, so it's the peers who join.
Okay.
Right. I understand that. I'm just wondering if Lance is.
I did not understand. Sorry. I was, I was wondering why it was.
Yeah, like there are a lot of more kids in the program, but they can't be charged.
Correct.
So 16, so it's 161. But then when it goes to 32, the cost goes to 263. That seems to be outsized. Because that, that seems to be less than expected than I would expect. Because I would have thought from 16 to 32, maybe it's the math, sorry, 16 to 32, I would have thought that went to 322 as opposed to 263.
Doesn't double.
It doesn't double. So it just, it just, it's because of peers instead of pupils.
Correct. Well, because we have to leave space for the, the children on the I P's.
Okay.
And we have no idea how many, how many.
So this is not a one for one expenses.
Correct.
Got it. Okay. But 263 is our estimate of what the expense would be for 32 peers.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what this requires.
And if this were a private institution, we'd obviously be basing our prices on break even, trying to not lose. Because if you're a private school, you don't want to do private schooling. But here we, we're not based on, what is our metric and what is our goal with our, with our tuition philosophy here? Is it the 50/50 you mentioned?
I'm not certain we could ever get to the 50/50 without really raising it too high to make it almost equal to private. But at least with the suggested increase, it will then cover one whole program. However, we look at it, it can cover one whole program or it can cover 50% of the two. So it kind of puts us where we need to be.
And what was, so we, we've asked, so the reason we're going to 32 peers is because we're adding, we're budgeting for our budget request is to add another, is for funding to add to their class.
Correct.
And so if we do nothing, the difference goes from 116 to 179.
Correct.
Is that difference, 179 minus 116, is that difference accounted for in our budget increase request currently? Okay. So if we take that 179 and increase tuition to 3,000, that goes down to 167. So we get the net increase of about 12 grand. And so the, the question is, do we want to, do we want 12 grand or 19 grand? Or, okay. Thank you for indulging me all in that math exercise.
That's a lot of great math, Lance.
You don't have to go to the, you don't have to go to the summer.
Or the April one.
So, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna yield just for a moment because I realize I'm dominating the conversation, but I have questions. But any questions from the other questions? I do have a couple of questions. Any other questions in the committee? Mr. Carr?
I'm just, I'm just curious if you, sorry.
No, no, it was, it was.
I'm just curious if you feel like there'd be any fallout of like families who are already have their kids in the program and are expecting 2,800 dollars and then it goes up? If that might be a deterrent for peers? I understand that it's less expensive than a private school, but I'm wondering if you lose people who you've already, who have applied and said, yeah, I hear you.
I don't think so, but I mean, I can't, I can't speak for everyone, but they have communicated that as they're putting out the information now.
Okay.
Um, the tuition is a positive. Right now they're looking at deposits. And they, they're communicating that the tuition may change.
Okay. So that's being explicitly stated.
Correct.
In, like in writing to families.
Although.
I don't know, I don't want to say, right, but that there may be a change.
Yes.
That's my understanding, right?
Yes.
All right. I just want, I mean, you know.
It's a good question.
It just can really make a difference for families. Like if you're kind of loosely budgeting 2,800 and then all of a sudden it's more.
Yeah. That's why we try to, well, that's, that is, we also try to look at what other programs.
Oh, I totally understand that. I'm just, you know.
Yep.
I'm thinking of when I put my own children in school, you're like, wow, that was different than I thought.
It's thoughtful.
And that was, that was touching on, I was gonna ask this, whether or not we've done a, for lack of a real call, an impact analysis. People would not come, choose to come to our program because of the increased rates. There's, there is a deflection point at a certain number where we're like, eh, that's not worth it. And how do we go about it, 3,000 versus 3,200 versus the 2,800?
So the recommendation from myself and the director of student services is it, just to be comparable to, you know, other districts. We could easily go to the third or whatever. Because it puts us right in the middle, right in the middle. And it doesn't compare at all to the private, so.
And we're, we currently have students on WMS, right?
Yes. So right now, if they, you know, if they don't get into our preschool, they then have to pay 6,400 or 5,500 a night.
Well, we, we shouldn't have WMS with the two sections.
No, no, the idea was.
We just don't know we have two sections yet because we have to wait until the budget's approved.
Yes.
Right? Like it's not.
Well, not official, but we do have, we do have, we do have the capacity to do it. We get the.
Right. I understand that.
It's kind of, it's difficult when you're trying to fill classes.
Yeah.
You have to do it now.
I mean, just thinking about kind of what I'm seeing on like Cohas at 143 and people who are new to town and applying. And they say, oh, I got into both the Carriage House and the preschool at Osford. And people are saying, oh, both are great. So like, people are looking at them as even, well, not people. The people who posted those things, that doesn't mean that everybody.
Right.
Are saying, oh yeah, these are kind of heated. This is, they're not saying, wow, one is 2,800 and one is 6,400. Saying which ones.
I guess one last thing that I'd be curious about, if we do get the approval to open second class, what I, what I want to make sure wouldn't happen is that if we increase tuition such that we did not have a full second class. So we're, what, what we're doing is both increasing supply and potentially. It may not be the right time, so that's something that I'd be interested in. If we have any thoughts on how that will impact people's enrollment. The other thing is, so we're talking about about $20,000 of a year. Where would that go? Would that go to further fund the program? Does that go into general budget?
It would.
The additional revenue?
The additional.
It would go into the revolving account to help fund the program.
Okay. So this goes directly to preschool. Okay. Great. That's all the questions I have. Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay. No, it's preliminary. So it's just, I know there's time to gather, you know, applications and put information out. So I wanted to get it on the table.
And the idea would be formal discussion next time and then a vote on the 29th.
Yeah. So for the phone set, is it the, right on the, on the impact potential. Parents.
I think, is Mrs. Stowacker at our next meeting?
Yes, Stowacker is at the next meeting.
So she can also provide.
Sure can. And that, and that also be good because we'll be able to give families notice.
Yeah.
That we'll be discussing it on the 15th. And then you'll be, the committee will be able to take that information and then vote on the 29th.
Great. Any other questions on the, on this? Any other cases from liaisons or, we, we are, we are moving forward on policy. Wait, I think, do we have a meeting scheduled for the policy review?
Yeah, we have to reschedule.
We're gonna reschedule. But we, we are, we are working on that. So rest assured, policy will be being updated. I, I think we could work, we did a preliminary review. There's nothing that's drastically off of what the model procedures are. So we don't have any major gaps that we need to close. So.
All right, that's. I'll mention one thing. I've just been watching the budget process in other departments around the town. There's a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of draw on new capital from a lot of different places. And the town's sorting that out as it prepares its budget. It just seemed like there's a lot of new activity out there. It just, it may affect us, it may not affect us, but it just seemed that a lot of departments are asking.
Making capital or.
Capital.
Do we get any like bonus points for seniority? Because we always ask for capital.
That would be nice.
It might cut the other way.
No, I'm trying to be positive.
Just to put in perspective, you know. Yeah, I don't know what to do about that, but it's. Much of that.
Yeah. And from the conversations I've, I've had, similar. There's a, there's a big number that will be requested and a small number that is available to disperse. So it is unlikely that any particular department gets 100% of what they're asking for. I would expect approaching that. So that's just a account finance issue. So it is, it is what it is. And we have mechanisms to address it through the political process. So. Great. All right. I think that concludes our community relations communications. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. We don't have minutes for approval. That's not a negative.
I'll have two and four consideration.
I will too. Get some back backlog done before I'm out of here, guys.
Excellent. Where are you going?
She's, she's gonna be forcefully re-nominated.
Good.
Yeah. So, Dr. Collins, we do have some future agenda items that have come up.
Yes.
One is the, and this is not for next meeting necessarily, all of them, but the report card review that Dr. Collins offered. Our MSBA vote, we'll want to vote to approve that. Our calendar, obviously, we're gonna do that. And maybe for next time also, again, we'll have to look at the agenda, but we definitely want to look at those I R E scores versus prior years. Because I think that will be valuable.
We do have our, our reading program spotlight.
We have.
Next time.
Yes.
And we have special education.
And that would be good if we could bring in, Vice Chairman, I mentioned was the I P data, bringing it out, I P's, seeing that same I R E data. Mr. Kennedy raised the idea of, I'll call it academic recognition. I think that's a general topic. We can figure out if we want to, if we want to talk about that. And then preschool tuition.
And after school.
After school programs. That is on our, that is on our list, but.
Keep banging on.
That's what, that's what we love about you.
Reading and then we have, we get, you're, you're in the, you're in the line. We, we had discussed in the past presenting and options on a little strategy for the schools as it pertains to spring meeting, springtime meeting. We'd probably love 10 minutes at a time convenient to discuss that.
Let's.
To try to get more people to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I think it's very.
I like that. And, and spring meeting becoming more in focus now that it's meteorological.
Uh, March, March 1, Meteorological Spring.
So, oh, in 12 days, we turn the clocks.
So that concludes our future agenda items. We do have two reasons to move into executive session. The first reason is number three, strategy anticipated by the bargaining and litigation. And the second reason is number two, contract negotiation with non-union personnel. Given that this is our last agenda item, I don't plan to reconvene the meeting after executive session. So I would entertain a motion for us to move into executive session without reconvening afterwards, therefore adjourning both meetings at the end of executive session.
So.
I have a motion to, I have a second from Mr. Saint Ange. Roll call vote, Mr. Kennedy.
Aye.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. Saint Ange?
Aye.
Mr. McCollum is absent. Mr. Dahl, aye. We will now move into executive session. For those of you staying with us at home, thank you very much. I hope you enjoyed our.
Thank you for the school committee. Thank you. Quite a number of people listening.
Yeah. And anyway, so we will, there's nothing to see here further and we will go into executive session.
Thank you all.